Good evening, Extra. Welcome to the May 31st, 2022 Extra Select Board Meeting. Before I announce the board, introduce the board, rather, we are going to go down to the Wheelwright Room for a quick board interview for a volunteer for our advisory board. So we will convene in a few minutes. Okay, good evening again. Good evening, Extra. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those attending the night, and those of you watching at home. And welcome to the May 31st, 2022 Extra Select Board Meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the board. To my right is Selectwoman Lovey Roundtree O'Leary. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
To my left is our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening.
And Selectwoman Nancy Balenter, to my left as well.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, all the way to the left.
Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening, Joanna. And I'm Nico Papakosinides. Selectwoman Cowan, our Vice Chair, will be joining us in a little bit. She's running a little late. So we'll start with public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody in the public who wishes to come forward with comment. We do ask that if your comments are relative to anything on the agenda, you wait until that agenda item comes up. So I'll pause for a moment for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on. We do not have any official proclamations or recognitions this evening, but I would like to take a few moments just to mention and recognize several people. Yesterday, most of us were in attendance for the Memorial Day Parade. It was a beautiful day for the parade. The parade was lovely. And I just want to thank the members of the Memorial Day Committee, particularly the Chair Florence Ruffner, and all of the volunteers that worked with Florence. Also want to thank the volunteers that set up all of the flags that ran up High Street and all around the parade route. Absolutely beautiful, and I want to thank the volunteers that took the time to do that. Also want to thank Public Safety, members of the Public Safety that were there, not only to participate in the parade, but help out for a few folks who needed some medical attention. At our last meeting during Select Board Committee reports, I mentioned during the Swayze Parkway trustee that on April 29th, which was Arbor Day, we had several tree companies come and do pro bono work in the Parkway, particularly trees. The work that was performed was worth, the Swayze Park trustees earmarked, work that was going to be contracted out. And to celebrate Arbor Day, four companies came in and did the work again, pro bono. This work could have totaled almost $20,000, and we're very, very thankful for those companies. And I'd like to just mention the four companies and publicly recognize and thank them. Parkway Cornerstone Tree, Curtis Tree Care, Piscataqua Landscaping Tree, and Northeast Shade Tree. It's my understanding that these tree companies are also going to come back and check on their work, and if there's any additional work, they're going to fix that up and perform that also as a courtesy to the town. I'd like to also point out that St. Anthony's Bakery and Lexi's provided food for all of the workers for the four respective companies. The trustees were also in attendance, particularly Dave Short, who spent the day there. And I'd really like to just recognize and publicly thank former trustee Martin Damsel, who spent the entire day there volunteering, helping the crew, and also folks walking and running through the Parkway and making sure they're safe. So we thank Mr. Damsel for that. Last but not least, I was proud and honored to attend an awards luncheon last week, along with Mr. Dean and Assistant Town Manager Roy, Department Heads from Public Works. And this was the New England chapter of the American Public Works Association. And our Director Jennifer Perry was formally presented her award of being one of the top 10 Public Works Directors in the country. There were over 300 Public Works Department Heads and employees there from New England. And Jennifer, again, congratulations. It was an honor to be there. Thank you for inviting us. And, you know, we work with all of you so much, and we hear stories. It was delightful to meet your husband and your mother. So congratulations. With that, we'll move on to the approval of our regular meeting minutes for the May 9th, 2022 Extra Select Board Meeting. I'd ask the board if there were any amendments or revisions to the minutes. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Extra Select Board regular meeting minutes of May 9th, 2022.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0. And finally, before we get to our discussion items, we have a resignation to consider from Dick Matthews, who has resigned from the Recreation Advisory Committee. So I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation from Dick Matthews from the Recreation Advisory Committee.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 4-0, and we thank Mr. Matthews for his work. Okay, our first discussion item this evening, we have our Fire Chief Wilking here this evening, as well as our Health Officer, Mr. Murray, to give us a COVID-19 update. So, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board, and Town Manager Dean. I'm going to have the Health Officer, James Murray, speak first, because I always steal all his thunder, steal all his talking points, and he stayed around town this evening, and we'll jump in at the end. So James, take it away. Do your report.
Fair enough. Hi, James.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So the COVID-19 numbers throughout the state are on the rise right now. The reported numbers might be actually lower than the actual numbers, just due to the number of at-home tests. New Hampshire is currently at a high level of community spread, according to the CDC. Locally, as of Friday, Exeter Hospital reported increased pressure on their inpatient capacity. At its peak last week, Exeter Hospital had 14 COVID patients. I checked PEA's dashboard today, their COVID-19 dashboard. It was last updated on the 29th, I believe it was. They currently had seven cases in isolation on campus. Thursday evening, WMUR had last reported Exeter had 84 active cases. So the guidance for COVID-19 has not changed. I would recommend still anyone to talk to your doctor or pharmacist about getting the vaccine. At-home tests are available at most pharmacies and retailers still. Free testing is also available through the state at covid19.nh.gov. Last I'd seen, they're not rapid tests. They're the saliva tests that you send out, but they are free, available to New Hampshire households. Since our last update, we now have another tool in the toolbox, PaxLivid, available through prescription. So those who have COVID-19, that are having symptoms, within five days of symptom onset, they can be prescribed PaxLivid. There are contraindications for that, so that basically means it's not recommended for individuals taking certain medications or with certain medical conditions. So of course, you would have to speak to your doctor anyway, but it is something that can reduce hospitalizations if utilized correctly. That's all I have for my update, pending any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Murray?
He answered mine about the academy when it's suddenly in full. I didn't know what that number meant, but he answered it.
Can I ask you two? So it's correct now that the children that were aged, was it five or six to 11, can now get a booster? Is that correct?
I believe for Pfizer, yes.
Okay. Okay. And vaccinations are available now for children who are under five?
I'm not sure on that. I'm going to have to check.
All right. And to the best of your knowledge, has the hospital brought back any of their requirements for masks or mandate? What is the status of masks at the hospital? Do you know?
I don't know that the status of the masks have changed at the hospital. I think they've been required all along.
Okay.
Last week, I received an update from the hospital, the first one I've had since, I believe, March or so. We stopped getting the weekly updates, but due to their high volume last week, they sent an update.
Okay.
Just with their recommendations. And again, it falls in line with these CDC recommendations.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate the update. Chief, did you have anything there?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I would add, as we have elipsed the two-year mark in COVID, is that the data we're collecting, or the sources, are becoming more and more scattered. The state of New Hampshire, as indicated in the minutes, have dropped to a weekly analysis of their numbers, so it's really hard to get numbers for communities such as Exeter. We're relying on mainstream media like WMUR and their dashboard, and nobody's sure how reliable that data is. Not indicting MUR, just they too are seeking information, and it comes in spurts, four or five days at a time, then a three-day break, and then another four or five days. So it's really hard to kind of tell you what our averages are, but James is absolutely correct. You know, we currently believe we have about 84 residents that are known positive. You hear everything from three times that number or whatever, people that tested at home are asymptomatic, just perhaps have COVID but haven't been tested. So the data is becoming less and less and less and less reliable to predict and to kind of coordinate any meaningful response. I believe you receive the same updates we do from Vice President Mark Whitney, so it's great that we're receiving the information at the same time. But one of the things that was telling statewide is the state of New Hampshire, the week previous had 135 patients in hospital treatment facilities statewide. This past week, that James just gave you the number, it dropped to 122. There's still an impact there. There's still, you know, Mark Whitney talked about the surge capacity. They had quite a run. They, you know, survived it. They're moving on, but it still seems to be around. And New England seems to be the area most hard-hit by the most current variant, and we're only hoping that it too burns itself out, and we end up having a summer that's meaningful to all. But recommend to take all precautions. But, so we'll give you future updates. We'll present numbers. It's just the reliability of those. We're not really sure.
Understood. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Chief. Thank you. Do you get directly information from the Rockingham County Center?
I don't. I know James and I are follow, I wouldn't say we're in touch regularly, but follow New Hampshire DHHS and Public Health, DPHS, but it typically doesn't come through the county. And what we're also finding, I'm not sure it was your question, is that they have completely stopped giving us county data. The only place we're finding community data, as we mentioned, mainstream media. New Hampshire Health and Health Services, DPHS, isn't even providing the county numbers anymore, so we don't receive typically anything from Rockingham County.
Okay, well, there's an outbreak there, just for everybody to know, and it's severe enough that visitors are required to wear gowns and face shields. So being associated with a resident there, I can forward you the messages that I get almost daily now.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. We do keep in touch regularly with our five or six large congregate care, you know, facilities in town as to what their status is, and we haven't seen anything more than a kind of a bubbling along of the numbers, nothing that would consider a spike. So that is good to know. We do mutual aid to the nursing home, and the crews obviously take precautions, but it's good to know that there's more. But no, we don't speak regularly to the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next, we have an update on the community power. Lou, are you going to speak to that?
I guess I will.
Terrific.
I may need a tutorial on how to get my slides up there.
All right.
Let's see.
Mr. Dean, is there someone out back that could...
I thought we were just there a second ago.
I saw them earlier, but I don't know where they are.
Is it a power source?
Yeah.
Is it on the bottom, the red key?
Is it on the bottom, the red piece?
Oh, here we have it. We have.
Which one is yours?
It's, actually Bob put it up there. It's a PowerPoint that you just had up there. Next one. There it is. There you go. There you go. Thank you. Well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to give you a quick update on Community Power. And the timing is good because it's about three weeks ago that the Member Operations and Engagement Committee of Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire had a meeting. And in that meeting, they put together a very comprehensive timeline, outline of all the steps that need to be gone through in order for communities like Exeter to actually have a functioning Community Power program going early next spring. So I put this all in your packet, but let me just run through it really quickly. This is one of the slides that was in that presentation from the CPCNH presentation three weeks ago. And pretty well outlines what needs to be done. Above the line are basically things that we will be bringing to you, we being the Community Power Coalition, will be bringing to you the governing body for approval. Adoption of a JPA amendment, JPA, as you remember, is the Joint Power Agreement. You all signed on to that, I think, last fall. There is an amendment that will need to be approved by this body. The electric aggregation plan that we put together and that was also approved is going to need to be amended, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Then going on later in the year, October, December, cost-sharing agreements, energy risk management policy, financial reserve policy, rates policies, these are all going to be coming out of Community Power Coalition as recommendations, and will come to you as recommendations for approval. So let me advance, if I can do that. Yeah, okay. This is, this is a little bit about the JPA amendment that you will ultimately have to approve or decide to approve. There are actually three amendments that have to be made. Two of them are pretty much inconsequential and will not need, need any Select Board approval. This one does, essentially, it's, it's an amendment to change the way amendments are made to the JPA. The way it is now, it's Article 16 of the JPA stipulates that the only time an amendment can be made is at a regular meeting of, the regular annual meeting of CPCNH. And that meeting occurs in April. It's not particularly convenient. Not only that, but if during the year a community was interested in a project that might require some amendment to the JPA, if it could only be approved at one meeting in the year, it's, just didn't make a lot of sense. So the amendment that will ultimately come to you will basically say that the JPA can be amended at any regular meeting of the, of CPCNH. And the same regulations for approval will, will apply. I've been in touch with Lisa Sweet, who is the Chair of the Member Operations Committee of CPCNH. I was just in touch with her last week. She assures me that CPCNH will be coming through with a memo, I guess I would say, that will further explain what the JPA amendment is all about and what must be done for, to proceed with that. So let me go on. This is for the changes, the amendments to the electric aggregation plan. As I think you know, the five, four or five towns that are further ahead on this process have submitted their electric aggregation plans to the PUC. They did that probably two months ago. They were rejected, and it was not surprising because the PUC has at this point no rules for determining the, for evaluating electric aggregation plans. But in addition to that, they did come up with these three particular concerns that they felt need to be addressed. Relationship with utilities and customers, method of ensuring the provision of load-serving entity. Load-serving entity is essentially a utility. And they want clarification on how our Community Power Program will function as a load-serving entity. Security for individual customer data. This is something that's always been a concern. Precisely how will individuals' information that has to be provided to the Community Power Program so they can determine the power load that they, that has to be supplied, but how will that data be protected? So those three areas are areas of concern that the EAP will have to address. And let me, Lisa sent me an email, which I think better explains basically how, how they plan to proceed. So she says, "The revision to the energy aggregation plan is expected to be a technical appendix, which explains more fully any questions the PUC has raised in its prior review of submitted plans." "If the finalized rules, which we are waiting, are essentially like the proposed rules," and the proposed rules were actually put together by Cliff Bealow of CPCNH. "But if they are like the proposed rules, then one member will submit their plan as a test case, one member being one town." "The idea is that if the rules are similar to the proposed rules, then we can address the concerns that were raised, and the PUC will be ready to approve." "The approval of the test case will inform other members as to whether we and the PUC are ready to go." "If the, if the financial rules are not essentially the proposed rules, then we may need to go, we may need to continue to participate in the JALCAR process." JALCAR being Joint Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules. And she further goes on to say, "And/or make more clarifications." So we're in a bit of a holding pattern. That being said, CPCNH should, should have a draft of the technical appendix for the EAPs ready in the next couple of weeks. So you can see where we are in that. We're somewhat waiting for the PUC to do their job. Lisa seems to think that this will happen fairly soon. So going on from that, what's gonna happen in Quarter 3, Quarter 4, what we hope will happen in Quarter 3, Quarter 4. Hopefully, the electric aggregation plans will, will have, receive approval. The data sets will be available. And CPCNH will have contracted with vendors for the services and credit support that is going to be required. So the idea is through September through, and through December, CPCNH providers will enable the following. I think the most important thing is the second bullet there, drafting an approval of CPCNH's cost-sharing agreement, energy risk management, rates, and reserve policies. So the idea is that the service providers will work with CPCNH to come up with those agreements and all of the other things that are stated there as well. And finally, so we will be coming back to you, we being Community Power Aggregation Coalition. We'll be coming back to you sometime before the end of the year with the various agreements, cost-sharing agreement, energy risk management, rates and reserve policies. These are all things that you will be asked to approve at some point. This is after the CPCNH Board has approved them. So they will be coming through a combination work with CPCNH and service providers. They will then come to us and to you for possible approval. That all being done, the rates can be set at the end of the year, and we can move forward. So hopefully, all of this can be done primarily by the end of the year. And if, if we meet all these targets, and there's a lot, a lot of questions of whether we can, but if we can, then launch of a program in spring of '23 is a possibility. So.
That's exciting.
That's what I have to tell you, but if there are questions.
Any questions? So you'll be coming back probably next month?
I would assume sometime late June. Hopefully before the end of July, because the idea would be to bring to you both the JPA amendment and also the electric aggregation plan amendments as well. Bring them both to you and have you, have you decide.
Great.
Okay.
Well, that, that's exciting, and you know, I hate to be, because I know it's just the beginning of summer, but the end of the year, we'll be here sooner than we think. So I know you've got a lot, a lot of work to do between now and then, but.
As it says there, plan to accomplish a lot between September and December.
I see.
There is a lot to be done. And as they say, a lot of it isn't in our hands to complete.
Right.
It's dependent on how things work in Concord.
Understood, understood. What I, what I would ask of you though is if there, if there's anything that the Board needs to vote on that's time-sensitive to work with the Town Manager's Office, because of course, we don't meet every Monday. So if there's something that's time-sensitive, if you could let us know, and that way, we can make sure we can get you on the agenda so that we don't miss something.
I think the plan would be as soon as we know, we can convene our committee and
Perfect.
And get it to, get it to you as quickly as possible, yeah.
Perfect. That would be ideal. Good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Lou.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Intersection Valuation Report. And with us this evening, we have Town Engineer Paul Vlasic. Hi, Paul.
Good evening. Paul Vlasic, Town Engineer. Back in the Town Warrant 2019, the town approved a intersection study for $50,000. And and we started that in 2020, and right about the same time as COVID hit. So we have a draft final report, and there's been changes to that draft since October on the town website. And so this is a discussion of some of our findings. And with us tonight is the Project Manager Greg Bakos from VHB.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. What I'll provide is a summary of our findings and recommendations. And let's see if this works. So the project purpose was to conduct a townwide study of the town-owned intersections, not state-owned, to inform decisions on future expenditure of capital improvements and provide a base for further study. We, you know, the data collection that we accomplished is reusable in the future as well. We primarily looked at traffic operations, you know, how well is an intersection functioning, as well as safety. And I would say that we found that the safety was more of the overarching criteria as composed, as compared to operations. Operations are important, but we found that that was more of a background-type factor as opposed to safety. We started by collecting crash data. And we also examined the recommendations of the 2018 Master Plan and the 2019 Warrant Article on the Intersections. For the traffic operations piece, we did kind of a high-level overview of operations. As Paul mentioned, we started our study right about when, when the COVID shutdown happened. So we weren't gonna be collecting any new data for quite a while. But we were able to rely on historical data to look qualitatively at what intersections were doing, how they were performing, where the delays were. And we mapped that based on morning and evening peak hour delays and that sort of thing. We also did field observations. We went out to the intersections, our traffic engineers did. And we, of course, accepted town input, you know, Paul and his group, what they observe on a daily basis. This is just an example of one of the maps. We actually took Google data, Google traffic data, that you can go back in time and look at a specific day of the week. This was a Tuesday at 8:00 AM. And it colors the, the roadways based on the, the traffic operations, green being great, orange being okay. And at this particular day, there was, there were no red. So this allowed us to look pre-COVID at some of the conditions out there. So then the, the safety analysis. We collected 88 intersections that had at least one crash. There were intersections that have none, so they didn't show up. We accepted input from the town police and again, the town staff on what they observe as being the problem intersections. We again, conducted field, field observations to see what kinds of things are contributing to those crashes, be it geometry or traffic controls like stop signs, yield signs, or are there sight distance concerns? And we found that at some of the intersections. So we, we did a little more data gathering besides just the crash data. We then ranked all the intersections based on their five-year crash history. And that actually is in your handout, is one of the pages, has all 88 intersections listed. And then we cross-referenced that, like I mentioned earlier, to the intersections that were listed in the Master Plan, as well as in the 2019 Warrant. Here's just that list. I will note that the number of crashes is on the right for the study period. And it goes from a high of 41 all the way down to a bunch of ones. But the high is one of the state intersections, so we crossed that off the list. You'll note that number two is front at Water Street, you know, where your bandstand is.
Could I just, could you just for the record state what the time period was that you took this data?
Yeah, it's a five-year period, and I forget the years. I think it ended in 2020, I believe. So it was 2020 and earlier. I think it was 15 through 20, something like that. It's in our study.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And stop me at any time. So these are the, this is how the intersections within the Master Plan, they were identified as focus area. So these are the, this is how the intersections within the master plan, they were identified as focus area intersections in the master plan, how they ranked. You can see the worst is Epping at Brentwood, and that's being addressed or has been addressed at five, rank of five, with four collisions per year. All the way down to Brentwood Road at Dogtown Road with only .2 collisions per year, ranking 85th. So, you know, these, these were considered priority intersections in the master plan. But the crash data doesn't necessarily bear it out. Some did, some didn't. So, and again, crash data is only part of it, but it was, we found it interesting. And then we looked at the four intersections that were part of the 2019 warrant article and how they ranked. And there is actually overlap. Some of these intersections were in the master plan as well. But again, there's quite a range. Water Street at Front Street had the second highest in town at 5.8 per year, and then all the way down to only .5. I want to point out one important consideration is that we did not get crash severity data. And I can get into that as we start talking about the alternatives that we studied. But I think that's, that's important to note. And again, you shouldn't just look at the number of crashes. I think it's important to note, you know, what types of crashes are happening at that intersection. So what we, before I go further, it was decided by the town, after looking at all the data and our considerations, we did an initial report to the town with our initial findings. And the decision was, let's just focus on these four warrant article intersections. Let's draw some conceptual designs that would address the issues at those intersections. And then see how they, see how they look, see what kinds of opportunities there are to improve the conditions there. So that's what we did. And I'll go through each of the conceptual designs and some of the considerations. So the first one, and I'm doing these in descending order of crash history. So the worst one was Water at Front Street. And we looked at, you know, what is contributing to the crash history there? And I think it's fairly obvious that there's a lot happening in a very small area. There's a lot of turning movements right up by the bandstand. There's heavy volumes at certain times of day, which leads to motorists frustration, risk-taking, and that sort of thing. You also have the bandstand itself has a little bit of impact on sightlines, especially for the northbound motorists that are taking a left. You know, they can appear, if they do it too quickly, they can appear out of nowhere for a vehicle that's going east. You also have diagonal parking on the north side, very close to the travel lane. Those dimensions where the diagonal parking are typically too narrow to have this kind of a setup. You know, it is what it is in a downtown, but we wouldn't design it that way if we had a clean slate. We'd provide more room. Or we would change the angle of those diagonal spaces so that they're a little more angled, so that the cars aren't backing out quite so perpendicularly. And as Paul mentioned, to me today, he's observed vehicles going east on Water Street, pulling a U-turn to pull into those spaces. So the more you angle them, the less attractive that is or the harder it is to do that. But I kind of digress here. The crash numbers are relatively high at this intersection. It's actually several intersections combined. But I think the, I'm guessing anyway, the severity is pretty low. I'm guessing these are mostly fender benders that you're seeing. It's low-speed, high-volume, low-speed conditions. So we, we looked at, it's really laid out well. The last project that went through did a really nice job doing some of the curb extensions on the sidewalks, really clarifying where the crosswalks are, putting a stop sign or stop line and a stop sign. Across Water Street as it enters the intersection eastbound, I think was huge. That provides, that forces people to stop and then go, and it provides gaps for some of the turning vehicles. It's really not bad. And we were struggling to come up with ideas on what could you do to improve it without totally revamping the whole intersection? And, you know, we were told from the beginning, don't talk about moving the bandstand. Probably not a good idea. So we're not doing that. We looked at a few things reversing directions on Front Street. You know, nothing really seemed to work out. We came up with some small improvements. What this shows up by the bandstand is the area that is currently striped out around the bandstand. We were saying, why don't we make that more of a physical, not a barrier, but something that people wouldn't want to drive over, like cobblestones? Something like that, to force them a little further away from the bandstand. So they're not sneaking around the corner invisibly to oncoming traffic. It's a small thing, you know, it might help. We did read that down at the bottom, that there are occasions when motorists are confused, and they might go up the left side if they're heading north. So we're saying, all right, let's add a little more physical separation and have more, maybe a raised median, or again, those cobblestones down the bottom, to make it a little more clear that, yeah, you stay to the right, and that sort of thing. And then lastly, we looked at re-striping that diagonal parking to be a little more of a severe angle. So that cars aren't backing out quite so, you know, perpendicular to the curb that come in, come out at a more of an angle. And they'd be able to see a little better, too, when they do that for the car next to them. The price of that is you might lose a few parking spaces to do that, to re-stripe it. So that was the extent of our recommendation, low cost typically. It depends on what, if you do do those cobblestones, that's pretty pricey. It's a permanent solution. So that was pretty much it. So the summary of that is minimal improvement potential without major reconfiguration. The improvements were showing a relatively low cost. And we said, take another look at that diagonal parking. If you don't do the cobblestone treatment, the diagonal parking might be one way of reducing some of the crashes. And I guess I'd want to take a deeper dive, maybe talk to the police. Is the diagonal parking actually contributing to crashes? You know, I'm assuming it is, but maybe it's not.
Before you go any further.
Yes.
Sorry, could I have, could you go back one slide?
Yep.
There's a circle in front of the bandstand. There's a circle and then an odd, what is that? Is that?
Shadow.
That's a shadow.
Oh, okay. You know why? Because coming around there, sometimes pedestrians cross there. That's why I was asking.
Okay.
If there was something that I've missed.
Yep, no.
Because that gets a little dangerous there sometimes.
For sure, yeah.
Thank you.
So on that note, can I ask a quick question then? Was it discussed, the, the lack of a crosswalk actually there? Because people do walk onto the, so I never understood how that was a possibility, that there's no direct crosswalk to the bandstand. But it's obvious that people should be going to the bandstand.
Yep.
Did that come up in discussion?
It didn't really, because, you know, there is down, sort of in the middle of the picture, there's a crosswalk going across Front Street. And then that cross-hatched area is an area where pedestrians could walk, you know, relatively safely. It's not going to prevent them from crossing from all different locations, though, I'm sure.
Of course, yeah.
Line of sight is a little tough there.
Sorry?
Line of sight is a little difficult there.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Except left-hand turn is a nightmare.
Approximately, how many parking spaces do you think would be forfeited?
You know, I think, I don't look, it does not look like it was drawn to scale, but I'm going to say one to two.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So the next intersection in terms of crash history was Front Street at Pine and Linden. And this is the existing condition plan. And it's pretty obvious the concern there is coming out of Pine and Linden is a wide-open paved area. And, you know, call it a free-for-all. There's conflicting movements there, confusion undoubtedly. And this is a location where, coming out of either Lincoln or Pine, you're going to have to move all the way up, you know, to be able to see before you come out. And the stop lines are way back. So you're going to hang out across crosswalks, or you're going to be in no man's land where you're in the way of something, you know? So it's just the way the geometry is, the existing layout. And that point I made earlier about crash severity, I would envision this one as having a higher likelihood of, you know, severe crashes, because somebody may time it wrong coming out from that side street. And Front Street is free-flow, so cars are going, you know, it's a pretty straight shot. Cars are going faster. So that, that would be our concern here. So not only was it the second highest ranking from a crash history among these four, but I would say it's probably, you know, more susceptible to severe crashes. So, and I would note how far apart the crosswalks are at each end. There's a church with all that parking above it. So there is, there are times when there's a lot of pedestrian activity. There's also a funeral home that they park along the street. So I think the pedestrian crossings are fairly spread out when you have two side streets coming in. This is the proposal that we, we are suggesting here. We did not come up with like a near-term interim low-cost solution, because it seemed like it's really begging for geometric changes. And the roundabout solution accomplishes many things. You can see that there are better crosswalk locations. The crosswalks are safer, because people are only crossing one lane at a time. There's a refuge island between the lanes. And I think importantly, it would slow down people on Front Street. It provides really good access to Pine and Lincoln Street without signalizing it. We don't believe signals would be warranted here in the first place. But it, it provides really good operations and vastly improved traffic safety. So that's the, those are the benefits. It's certainly not an inexpensive solution. You know, it's a fair amount of construction here to build a roundabout. And we were discussing earlier that the town doesn't have a roundabout yet. So it'd be interesting to see how people feel about them. But, you know, we're proponents of roundabouts where they make sense. And this is a location where I think it makes sense. You can see that there would be a little bit of property impact in the bottom triangular area there. And then up in the corner, it'd be a little bit of right-of-way acquisition, but pretty minor.
I think we have a couple of questions here.
Yeah, okay.
Just let them.
Yep.
No, the roundabout has been what I've wanted forever. So I like that. And my concern was, you know, the taking of Gale Park and whatnot. I had another thought, but it's gone, so.
The, the park, did you say the park?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's very little impact to the park. You can see, actually, I have a label that says, no impacts within park.
No, there it is, right there.
Because I knew you'd ask that question. There are a little, there's a little bit of grass that would be taken within public property on the corners. But where that arrow is pointing, I believe, is a little wall that kind of denotes where the park property is. And we're not planning to touch that, so.
What kind of signage would have to go with that to get people from Front Street to understand how they go to get to Linden Street?
Yeah, we frequently will have advanced signing that has a symbol of a roundabout with arrows. And the arrows each have a street name on them, so that in advance, you'd figure out, you know, where you're heading, so.
I know it's not directly on the road to the school, but have there been like questions or data about school children's safety and crossing there, do you know?
It hasn't come to our attention. But again, I think this would improve that in any direction. If you go back to what's there, you know, you have crossings on Front Street, the full width of the road. So, and I don't know if this, if they have crossing guards for the school, school kids. Okay, that's helpful, yeah.
But it's only, right, it's for, well, no, no, no. It goes from Front Street, from that corner over to Lincoln Street. There's nobody else down there.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I like that fact that it fits so well in there.
I know, it does fit.
So like a bus going in the roundabout, size-wise is?
Yeah, so I'm glad you mentioned that, because it's tight. You know, this is at the small end of one-lane roundabouts, you know, for the recommended sizes. But it's also, I think, compatible with the context here. You don't want a huge one that people can go around faster. You want it to be tight. But we did, we did examine, not just buses, actually, buses turn very well, but tractor-trailers, you know, can they make all these turns? You notice in, towards the middle of the roundabout, there's a hatched area. Those, those would be like cobblestones as well, that automobiles wouldn't want to ride on. But tractor-trailers can drag their rear wheels around to, you know, so it's called a truck apron. And it allows large vehicles to get around.
So if I could just, because I, both of those questions were along where I was going. I really liked the roundabout idea for this intersection. But I believe that that entrance into Lincoln Street is the biggest primary access that the school buses take to Lincoln Street. So.
Oh, there's a bus now.
So how, I understand your answer on the roundabout, but during the construction, I mean, keeping that in mind, I mean, how would that impact?
Yeah, construction of roundabouts is a challenge. We're doing two in Concord right now and on a state route. And it takes, you know, a lot of thought on how you phase the work. And it typically involves riding over temporary pavements, things like that. It even involves night work at times, when there's certain operations that you just can't do during the day when there's buses and that sort of thing. You know, most projects get built during the summer, so fortunately avoids most of the school year.
Good.
But those are valid concerns, you know, they're not, they're not that easy to phase. And there are alternative routes. There are, there are side streets that we could do detours during really bad, you know, phases, but.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, we did do a roundabout tryout around the bandstand.
Yes.
That was about, I'm going to say 15, 18 years ago.
Yep.
And it was not well-approved by the people. But it also, but there was also some obstruction to it by people chatting, stopping in the roundabout to chat with somebody that, you know, how do you like this? So it seemed to, it kind of died on the vine, because the experience that people who weren't stopping to chat got stopped anyway, so.
Yeah. It's a tough thing, you know, if people aren't used to driving them, they need to, they need it to be proven to them that they work, you know? I think there's so many around New Hampshire now that most people have been through roundabouts. And don't use the Portsmouth Circle example, we use more of a, you know, modern, small round. Lee, yeah. So I'll move on.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yeah, please.
So the minimum parking loss is, from what I can tell, is in front of the academy, the end. But what about the other side of the street, where there are a few houses and the parking for the church, their parking lot? Would that be affected at all by this?
I don't believe there's on-street parking in the intersection.
I'm more worried about the, their driveways.
The driveway is off to the left here.
Yeah.
You can see it. So I know when they exit, I'm sure it's en masse, you know, they probably come out.
I don't know how much, the configuration and how that would work with a circle.
Yeah, it, it should be fine, you know, they're, they're going to have to time it, they're going to have to wait a little bit.
Yeah.
We haven't restricted access to them.
Okay.
We've maintained access to the one driveway, private driveway in the intersection.
And that's what that little jet-out is, thank you. All right.
Yep, so we haven't taken access away from anybody, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I do understand that the funeral home, there are times when people park up and down the street. And they're going to have to be restricted. Once they get within a certain distance of the roundabout, they can't block it, you know? So, but there's still going to be on-street parking for them.
And it's been my experience that a lot of that, where you're talking about, is from in events, too. And the funeral home, they tend to park further down.
Further down, okay.
Sorry.
Good.
That's just been my observation through the years. Thank you.
So some of the considerations, it definitely, definitely slows traffic on Front Street. It improves access to the side streets, improves pedestrian access, will greatly reduce crash severity. There are minor impacts. The construction costs in 2021, we estimated at $550,000. And I bring this up for all of these alternatives, that the construction industry is upside down right now. And I didn't even want to put a number on it. I just said, here's what 2021 was. Who knows when you're ready to construct this, what things will be like? But, you know, we've seen crazy escalation. And so I'm sure it's north of 550, but we don't know where it's going to land. And as I mentioned earlier, we didn't find a low-cost alternative at this intersection. And as I mentioned earlier, we didn't find a low-cost alternative at this intersection. The next one is water at High, Clifford, and Franklin Streets. And the issues here are similar to the last one in that you have an awkward geometry coming into the main road. You have two roads coming in at angles, actually Franklin's leaving, Clifford's coming in. And you have that no man's land again as you're approaching High Street. So the, the crashes here are due to the conflicts, the unusual angle. And again, high volumes on High Street during certain times of day could be leading to risk-taking and, and just poor judgment, that sort of thing. We also noted that if you're coming from the west on Water Street, going into Franklin Street, it's a very flat curve and very easy to go fast. You know, not advisable because you're just going to Franklin Street, but you could come around that corner a little quickly as somebody is coming up on Clifford trying to inch out. So there's definitely concerns here. So here we did find some lower cost improvements. You'll notice on that left corner, bumping the curb out, similar to what they've done near the bandstand, to slow that right turn down coming off of High onto Franklin. Also bumping out the nose between Franklin and Clifford to shorten the crosswalk distances through here. But otherwise, there was not a lot geometrically that we could do and still maintain access for cars and, I'm sorry, larger vehicles like buses and trucks. So minor impacts, minor, I mean, minor costs, but minor improvement as well. We also looked at, what if you reversed the directions of the two side streets? So that Franklin would come out, Clifford would come down, that would eliminate those two roads crossing each other. Because Franklin, there would still be a prohibition on taking a left, so you could only come up Franklin and take a right. And then people coming into Clifford wouldn't cross that path. We thought this was a great idea until Jen pointed out that this used to be, that, or that used to be the configuration. And it was found that a lot of cars were taking the left, heading westbound on High Street to come down Clifford to get into the, you know, the downtown here. And as a result of that, they would frequently have to sit and wait to take that left. And that would back cars up on High Street, again, leading to congestion, frustration, and risk-taking. So we have second thoughts about this solution. I think it would need to be studied further, but it sounds like it's already been done and, and the town flipped it. So we probably wouldn't recommend it. So the alterations we proposed are minor, but they're relatively minor cost. And the reverse direction alternative has, has potential side effects that are undesirable. The next intersection is Winter at Railroad and Columbus. Like some of the others, you have skewed geometries that are leading to bad sight distances. You also have unrestricted higher, higher-speed movements. So, excuse me, coming down Winter Street onto Winter Street, there's no stop needed. So cars kind of swoop around that corner and don't really need to, and don't slow down. And then same thing on Railroad Ave, that's totally, that's free flow, unrestricted. So it's coming out of the side streets that are the problem. Coming out of Columbus is a problem, is difficult, you have sight line issues. Winter Street northbound is probably the bigger problem, where you have a fair number of vehicles heading north, coming to a stop, coming to a stop line and then having to look over their right shoulder through the trees in the park to see if somebody's coming on Railroad. So the geometry is really contributing to the concerns of this intersection. And again, this would probably be one of those cases where the severity of the crashes is relatively high compared to some of the others. Here we did see a few minor improvements that could be made. Kicking out those curb lines a little bit, it allows the northbound Winter Street driver to, to inch up a little further than they can today and still be protected by a curb. It forces the southbound Winter Street cars to slow down and deflect a little bit around the Columbus Ave vehicles as they come out. So it's, it's a minor improvement, but it's something, you know, to help sight lines and vehicle behavior. And then a roundabout fits here too. Very similar to the other one as far as size goes. It, it definitely would slow vehicles down, it provides safer and better access from all approaches. So that was, this would be the long-term improvement for this intersection. And then the third alternative was, don't put a roundabout, but change the geometry of Winter Street. This, it basically creates a T-intersection, it's something everybody's familiar with, it's, you know, very straightforward. It forces the Winter Street traffic to come to a stop in, and the, the northbound Winter Street traffic to come to a stop. And then they have really good sight lines in both directions. The southbound Winter Street traffic, if they want to continue on Winter, they don't have to stop, but they would definitely have to slow down, which they don't do today. So it definitely accomplishes safety improvements and it is less costly than the roundabout. It doesn't have all the attributes as far as slowing all the vehicles down, but it, it would definitely be an improvement for what's there today. Yeah, I would mention that it cuts across the park where the cannon is, but that's maybe, you know, can be managed.
I'm curious about the thoughts from this side of the line here.
The Columbus Ave line of sight coming out of there, does that improve?
That's improved, yeah, because it's a straight line now. When they come out, they'll be able to see in both directions as opposed to being on the inside of a curve, so.
Well, and there's also the problem with that fence that's off the corner.
Yeah, today, yeah, yeah. So pulling it out a little bit improves that.
And curbs that sideline. And what is the cost differential between this and the first one?
Glad you asked. It's about half, yeah, compared to the roundabout.
Yeah.
And I didn't price the minor improvement one, that's going to be, you know, very small dollars, yeah.
No, I, I know that you're configuring these based on today's traffic. But I, I look at it and I, I know that Railroad Avenue used to be that name all the way out to Epping Road historically. So Winter Street was its own separate thing and started from the, where the cannon is and went out to Front Street. So on this one, we'll have Winter Street come in, you have a stop sign, which we currently do, and then you turn left onto Winter Street.
Yeah, that is a little unusual, you'd have to think about the naming and how that would all work, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to ask the chief about that, right?
And that's it as far as our presentation, but I think, you know, we want to entertain input and questions.
So we'll open it up to the public for questions and we'll bring it back to the board. So I'll ask you to stand by. So come on up and if you would, just state your name, please, and address for the record.
Leslie Haslam, I'm a resident of Columbus Avenue. I've lived there for forty years this summer, so I've seen a lot of change. I am thrilled to see this on the big screen because I did go on the website after having had a helpful phone conversation, where'd you go? With our town engineer, N.J. Perkins, who directed me to that. Before we get into those, I have a very fundamental question to ask because I also came before you, thank you, select board and town manager, about the other end of Columbus Avenue, which appears to be water under the bridge at this point. This is a very different process, and I want to make sure I understand this correctly. What happened at the Brentwood Road-Columbus Ave-Epping Road intersection was a grant-funded deal. And this is not, these ideas are not, and I guess my fundamental question is, is there going to be with any of these intersections, more outreach, excuse me, any outreach to the abutters, to those who live on those streets and in those spaces to get their input? Is that part of this process?
Yeah, so ultimately, whatever was decided, if, if any of these were decided to go on the CIP for the warrant article, then obviously we would have, we would have public meetings to get public comment, suggestions, ideas. We like it, we don't like it, before it would be put on the warrant.
Okay, and how would that be advertised? I mean, you have to dig really hard to get at these plans now, and I was warned about that. Is there a standard procedure for communicating to the public other than something being posted on the website?
Yeah, there are several mechanisms, but obviously we've learned over the years, particularly last year when, when we had your neighborhood come forward. I mean, I think we would try to make sure that we communicated to as many abutters or, or folks that live in the neighborhoods, but certainly across town.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, I think, all of us on the board are committed to making sure, we, we want public input.
Great, correct, good.
Because it's real easy to sit up here and, that looks good. But we, we genuinely appreciate it when we have a packed room and people can civically and constructively and objectively offer input. It makes our jobs a lot easier, so we, we invite that.
Great, good. So I'm, as somebody who always votes as well, I was really glad, you know, when this intersection study passed. I'm really happy to see these proposals. And I want to speak very strongly in favor of the roundabouts. I went on a trip two weeks ago to upstate New York to a community that's like suburbia Schenectady. My friends have lived there for a long time. There's a new roundabout that is part of their commute. And it's, it impacts how they get home and how they go. It has completely transformed in such a positive way their community's life. And they said it took a little getting used to, but what a difference. I want to reference, there's a little roundabout in Newburyport when you go over the Chain Bridge. It's a terrific little roundabout. It, it makes so much sense, it costs more, yeah. But if it saves lives and it helps me feel safe coming in and out of my neighborhood, not just me, but all of us, I want to speak, I was happy to hear, Julie, for some of you say, yay for the roundabouts. I'm, I'm all for it and I will talk to my neighbors about it if need be. And I'm really grateful that this is out there and for the opportunity to give you my input. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Robert Ficara, Sixth Columbus Avenue, Exeter. I had a question on the, the Winter Street Railroad Ave and Columbus. Not the roundabout, but the other option. Human nature, as traffic comes, I'm, I'm not sure of north, south, whatever, coming from Park Street or coming down Railroad Ave, cars travel awfully fast coming through there. And when you're coming from the Park Street direction on Winter Street, you have a little bit of a gauntlet that you're traveling through where the road gets very narrow. And then as you start to approach the area where Cody's is, all of a sudden, you know, it, it gives people the feeling they can start to go faster. So I, I believe that no matter what, whether there's a roundabout there or whether the enhanced intersection, my question is, what are the thoughts of putting stop signs? If, if there is no roundabout, if it's the other modified one, having stop signs on both Railroad Ave and Winter Street before getting to that intersection to slow that traffic down? Obviously, we were all teenagers once upon a time. When a certain school gets out on the other side of town, lunchtime coming through there down Railroad Ave is, is really bad. So I just didn't know if, you know, not going with the expense of doing a roundabout there, but the bumpouts, would stop signs slow the traffic down and make it safer? I don't know how that fits in all the engineering, but that's my question, thanks.
I appreciate your question, Mr. Ficara, I'll defer to the experts. If you want to.
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
It's actually not a bad idea. If I can go back, yeah.
I've been studying it for thirty-six years.
So were you thinking of maybe having a stop sign up at the top before Columbus? Yeah, yeah.
So my thought was to have a stop sign here and a stop sign up at the end of that crosswalk.
Where, so, can I?
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Call it fun size, on the Winter Street side of Columbus Avenue. So Columbus Avenue could turn, Winter Street would have to stop before they get to Columbus Avenue. That would be huge. Yeah, if, this is far superior to option one, there's no question about it. My other, while this slide is up, and Julie, this goes to your comment about the name. If we, if this is ultimately where we go, I would really, I think it would make more sense to have this whole thing be named Railroad Avenue and that Winter Street is only this piece. I know it shakes people up, but we changed a bunch of street names not that long ago, so. And I just need to throw in one other question that I forgot to ask. With any of these, is there any plan to put a sidewalk on Railroad Avenue? Because there's this new lovely sidewalk, you know, that we can go all the way on Winter to Park or to Epping Road, that that got finished, but it is still exceedingly dangerous to walk from the end of Columbus Avenue to Front Street. So just had to put that one out there.
Thank you.
On the stop sign question, I could see some benefit having the one up at the top to help vehicles coming out of Columbus, which is, you know, the, one of the concerning movements. We don't typically recommend just putting stop signs around towns for speed control. It's usually for other reasons. But it's certainly something that, you know, could be considered here. It'd probably be, you know, a policy decision for your engineer and public works folks, but it may be valid for this location.
Yeah, I think slowing the traffic down on Winter Street, especially since, since the other end got blocked off, people who are having to come around are, are turning onto Columbus Avenue off of Winter Street at a high rate of speed. I think a lot of it's frustration. If there's a stop sign there, I think that doesn't help. Having nothing to do with coming out of Columbus, but the fact that they take that turn and they're on the other side of the street. But to see the traffic coming down Railroad Ave at certain times of day, you know, I mean, you're the engineer, but I'll bet you they're doing forty miles an hour, it's not easy.
Sure, yeah.
And having a stop sign there, you know, the stop sign will be slowing that traffic down for, for two intersections and a major driveway. I just think it would make sense to slow that traffic down. So thank you.
Thanks for the suggestion.
Any other public comment, questions? Then if not, we'll bring it back to the board.
So I'll just say that it's not in here, but the end of Railroad Ave, that speeding continues when they're pulling out onto Front Street. It, it, they barely stop. I lived there and it's dangerous. The danger continues, you guys have it worse by far. It is a tough area.
Does, I mean, I agree about the roundabouts in general. What is the, what is the implication of having a roundabout there? Does the speed then slow down for everybody coming out of the roundabout? That's generally the?
Yeah, it, it, it's a, the side effect is traffic calming in all directions. This one is a little unique because of the fact that it's a three-legged roundabout.
Yeah.
It won't have as much of an effect as a four-legged. A four-legged, you're coming in, you have to make a ninety-degree turn and it really slows people down. You'll notice the Railroad Avenue approach, there's not a ton of deflection, not as much as we would like, but we're kind of limited by the fact that it's a three-legged. But they, people still yield, they have to yield when they're entering if they're circulating cars. They have to yield when they're entering, if they're circulating cars. So just by that nature, people tend to slow down.
Anybody else on the board? So Mr. Dean, we have four intersections that we're looking at. Purpose this evening was to give us an update on the study. Are you looking for direction from the board? I'm sure for the town to move forward with?
Yeah, I think.
Some or, or all or none of the options?
Yeah, I would say eventually, we want to come back to this again. What I would foresee is that we would take this set of recommendations and we would boil it down to a CIP request. And that, that, at that point, we would go through our normal procedure with the CIP, with the Budget Committee and the Planning Board and so forth, to see what emerges out of that process. Unless, unless the board is really supportive of maybe one idea on one slide, if that's the way you want to go, then that's how we would queue it up.
Well, I guess I'd be interested in maybe shaking up the process a little bit. You know, we have time between now and when you present. It's not a lot of time, but we do have time. And I think that there are folks around town who are passionate about at least two of these four intersections. And I think before we put it into the CIP and send it on its way to budget, perhaps having a select board meeting where we can advertise this and invite public for public input, I think, you know, rather than kind of doing it backwards and having budget look at it, select board, and then throwing it on a warrant and at the 11th hour, folks are getting wind of it?
Yeah, and I thought about getting the Communications Advisory Committee involved as well. This seems like it's, it would be in their bailiwick to be able to put the information together, package it and get it to the most people possible, which is, I think, what we're trying to do. We want to have that input. So I know, working with Bob Glawacki and his group, we could get it out on social media. We could get it into the, obviously, the website is our big place where we advertise things, but there's some different options for us to take.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get this out to as many people as possible and then, you know, bring it before a select board meeting, prior to?
Prior to CIP?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Can I add to that? Is it possible to do what, say, the Planning Board does with notifying abutters to notify that neighborhood or these neighborhoods? I mean, I don't know. That's a lot of input, right?
We can, we can look into that and see what, what can be done.
I'm just.
Well, I think it's, it's not, no, it's not, I mean, it's, it's, I agree with you 100%. It's not what we typically do. I know, I know we're, we're good at doing what we're obligated to do under the law, but I think where folks have been talking about, particularly these two intersections for years, to, you know, find some postage in the budget to?
And the other idea is we could put out a survey and ask people what their preferred option would be, looking through this kind of?
All of the above? Yeah.
Right?
It could be all, so, because not everybody does surveys either and, or looks on our website or, I, I think a letter, something. We don't have to do a certified, it's going to cost a small fortune, but a letter to residents.
And, and the reality is, we can try all of the above. Social media, notifying abutters, communications committee, you know, all of that. And the reality is, not everybody's going to show up. And, and then, you know, after the fact, some people will show up. But I think we can make an extra effort to notify as, as many folks as possible to get their input and I think.
You know, the planning department is really good at sending out mass mailings.
Every smile.
It's true. It's true.
Thank you.
So circling, circling back to the four intersections, it, it sounds like the, the first intersection, possibly minor improvements such as taking away a parking space or two, to widen or, or change the position of the parking. The second intersection is to do the roundabout would be the, the most expensive but safest and probably would, would yield the, the, the best outcome for the community.
Right.
And then the Water Street, Clifford, Franklin, it sounds as if we need to?
There's nothing to do there.
Just look again because there's not much to do there. And then I think with option four, considering either the roundabout or the third option.
The T-intersection.
Correct. So should we pledge to make an effort to try to bring this back sometime in July?
It is May 31st, that sounds right.
I'm just thinking September, you're going to be putting together the budget.
Yep, I think that's great to have a follow-up discussion set up and notify people, get, get the word out about the meeting and hopefully people will come.
Terrific.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Consideration of the summertime and people will be on vacation, so the more notice they have, the better. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, could I make one, one comment on the intersection here before we go on to the next? We got the Phase Two of the Intersection Program approved last year. So we have funding for the consultant to carry this further. Or we can use a portion of that money and also look at new intersections too, so that we, you know, there, there may be three more that we can look at. And waiting till September is, we lose a lot of that timeframe. So as a suggestion, I, I, I think that we can keep a stipend of funds to help with the engineer with the four intersections that we're talking about now. And also use some of that to tackle some of the master plan intersections that were not addressed yet. Does that sound like a decent way to move on this?
It does to me unless you have an objection.
Yeah, my comment is, I, I just, I don't know if we need to hear more about those intersections in the master plan or, are you talking about bricks and mortar work, Paul?
I'm talking about what kind of improvements, just like a, a similar study to what just happened with these four intersections. There was four more that are in the master plan that haven't been touched yet. And we were thinking that that would be the Phase Two money, but let's back off on maybe only doing a couple of those and still allow our consultants to have some effort for moving this forward.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, my comment on that was, with the $50,000 that we have from the, just the last warrant.
Yep.
If some of these lower-cost improvements, as we saw tonight, are favorable from the board's perspective, you know, and I don't know how quick you want to move, but that is something that we could try to get done in a shorter window. So if you come to July, you have your second meeting, you have people come in, they talk about the intersections they want to talk about, and then we can decide, like, again, the, as the engineer stated, you know, the, some of these intersections really only lend themselves to small capital improvements with hopefully some decent return on that.
Yep.
So just thinking about that as part of that $50,000. Or, as we've talked about, some of this stuff, could it be done with ARPA funds? That's another avenue that we have. So, anyway, that's my, my comment on that.
Any other thoughts on the board?
And I don't know if Paul has an estimate off the top of his head, how much it would cost to have the four intersections in the master plan be looked at. Any idea how much that $50,000 would go to that?
We, we didn't go that far. We wanted to have this discussion first because this could have gone many different ways.
Sure.
So is it, is it reasonable to ask for one of our meetings in June for you to at least give Mr. Dean a memo or come back and, and answer that for?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Great. Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So since you're standing there, Paul?
So West Side Drive, can you load that one? We're, we're here tonight because the Clean Water SRF planning portion of West Side Drive is just about complete. And one of the things that we have to do for closeout is to provide a government body with our findings. We have Deb Lozelle that is on Zoom from New Hampshire DES that was the coordinator of that Clean Water SRF. And we also have Cole Malindi here, the consultant from Underwood Engineers that went through the process. So with that introduction, come on up, Cole, and walk us through the next presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
So we're here to talk about the West Side Drive planning. It's been about a two-year project. Well, it's been actually over a decade in the making. Frankly, we'll talk about that a little bit. Paul and Jen and me and Deb Lozelle and Dennis Green have all been involved with the project. I think Deb is online. So we'll talk about the background, the goals, and some of the evaluations we performed. Public participation was a big part of this. That was intentional from the start, so we'll touch on that too. We'll talk about the conceptual plan and budget, next steps and schedule, and then do you have any questions at the end? So this is a project area. West Side Drive is a loop road that goes around. There's a little bump out at the, on the east side, but it's off Route 111. Brickyard Pond is, I don't know, a couple few hundred yards off the slide to the bottom of the page on, off Route 11, some fields over there. So I alluded to, this project's been, we've been talking about this for over a decade. It was part of the Phase Three infiltration and inflow evaluation that Underwood did about, almost a decade ago now. This project was identified as a, as a study area. We kind of knew that there were some issues in this neighborhood going into that. It was then incorporated as well into your long-term control plan, the CSO Long-Term Control Plan in 2017 as part of that. And it was an area that we, it was identified as an area of significant private II. While we knew there was some I there, we weren't sure where it is. So I, I is clean water, basically storm water that gets to your sanitary sewers that doesn't need to be treated like sanitary waste. So when it gets to the storm sewers, it screws up your treatment plant a little bit. You have costs with chemicals and conveyance as well. And what we found, so I touch on that a little bit, it's basically sumps and drains connected to the sewer system. It takes up your sewer capacity and increases your treatment costs. And what we found in West Side Drive, a lot of it had to do with sump pumps connected to the sewer because there was not a great alternative. There, we looked at that neighborhood, there wasn't a great alternative for residents to dump their sump pumps. So we were trying to find a solution. That was, that was the next, or the genesis of this project is, we knew there was a sump pump problem. We, the project was funded $100,000. $75,000 was from DES Clean Water SRF loan with principal forgiveness. So there'll be more on that after we wrap that up. That loan will be closed with the principal forgiveness and then $25,000 from the town's sewer maintenance fund. So the intent was, we wanted to gather data. We knew that there was a sump pump issue here. We knew there was an II issue here, which we then found out with sump pumps. But we also wanted to look at the neighborhood as, as a whole. We didn't want to look at it as a vacuum. So we wanted to look at the sewer, the water, the drainage, the roads, solicit feedback from the residents too. That was right from the start, that was, that was part of the plan. And then develop a more, a comprehensive plan that takes into consideration all the infrastructure needs in the neighborhood, not just the II. So as part of that, we did topographical survey of the center line of the roads. We did geotech borings to understand some of the physical limitations that might occur out there, high groundwater, soil conditions. Did a condition assessment of the water, the sewer, the water, the drainage and the roadway. Won't get into that. That's all in the appendices of the report, is a big fat report. A lot of that is kind of in the background. We just want to touch on the high-level stuff. We also did building inspections for illicit sewer connections. Those ones were targeting buildings when we, we did the initial inspections around 2009. There's always a handful of properties that we don't get admittance to. So we, we focused on the ones where we didn't have data on from the previous inspections. So that was that. And then public participation, we'll touch on that a little bit. So the first thing we did was we sent out a questionnaire to the neighborhood before we even started anything, saying, "Hey, this is coming up. This is where we're looking. Can you tell us what, how you see, do you see these certain issues in your, in your neighborhood? What do you identify as the most critical needs?" Then we had a public meeting one, which was a listening session. We called that one the listening session where we went up there with a blank slate and said, "Hey, you know, we want, we want to solicit the, the residents' input." And then we did a public meeting in September 2021, looking at some of the alternatives and including the one that we're presenting tonight. And then tonight's summary meeting. So it was, it was interesting, you know, trying to do public participation during COVID. It, it was a bit of a learning experience, but I thought actually it worked great because in the past, when we've done these listening sessions, we go into a room, what we've done in the past, we go into a room, we lay out plans, people are in little work sessions all around. So we had to rethink that a little bit, but it worked out well. We had this plan, we had this plan up, and this is actually a markup. So while the, while the presentation was going, we were, people, and we had a pretty good turnout, people were, would give input. So higher sumps, high groundwater, wet basement, ponding. So ponding and the drainage really became apparent from this first listening session. And it was a bit of a transition. So this project in some ways transitioned, we started as a sewer project, saying, "We got these sump pumps going to the sewer." It transitioned to a drainage based on the feedback and based on what we were seeing in some of our evaluations too. Pedestrian safety, we saw a lot of people walk in the neighborhood, a little mixed feedback on that. But that was one of the, one of the things that came out of the public participation and what we observed during our sidewalks. And it was actually really interesting, going out there, when I, when I was out there with my vest, people would come out. They were, everyone seemed very excited and interested in the project, which is great to see. I mean, I, it was great and a lot of good turnout at the meetings. So the recommended project components, drainage improvements, about 4,500 feet of drainage, sump pump collectors. So that's a component of the drainage, but goes into those interior streets that are not, the exterior West Side Drive, there's a river on one side, a wetland on the other, but the interior streets with the tight lots, the sump pump collectors are there to provide a discharge location for sump pumps, water main replacement. We looked at your water master plan, AC mains out there. We looked into the geotech conditions, corrosive soils in the environment. It's been a problem in the town where corrosive soils and AC mains, it eats away where the services connect to the mains. So that was something that also became evident through this process of, of looking at the infrastructure as a whole. And then roadway improvements with pedestrian safety considerations. So all the alternatives had pedestrian safety considerations built in. So this is an overview. The yellow is the ponded area that either we observed or we got feedback from the residents of where there was drainage issues. The lines here show where there's proposed underdrains, improved drainage. And then we have the sump pump collectors on the interior roads that I alluded to earlier to provide a viable discharge point for people's sump pumps. And this is the conceptual roadway plan. We've, these are, these, we've provided this, these would have to be refined during final design. These were the concepts that were used for planning purposes at this level, but they would have to be refined, reducing the impervious area, but also providing accommodations for pedestrian safety, maybe a sidewalk, but those would have to be refined during final design. So the, the planning budget, the previous consultant alluded to it, it's, it's hard to predict. I mean, it's hard, like even with the supply chain, water main is out, you know, who knows? It's, it's challenging to try to, to project this, but this is, this is what we came up with. 2.2 million for the roadway and sidewalk, 1.5 for the storm water and II, municipal water, 2.6, per total is 6.3. The storm water and the roadway are somewhat tied because one of the things you have to do to make the storm water system work better is build in, you have to do, you can't really do the drainage without doing the roads so that the water flows to where it's supposed to go. flows to where it's supposed to go. Planning, so the next steps and schedule, final design, there was a Warren article, $330,000 this spring, of which the town was awarded ARPA grant for that. And then Clean Water SRF principal forgiveness, $122,000 for that. And we're in the process of submitting for construction. The pre-ops are actually due tomorrow for the water and storm water improvements. We've been talking, actually, I was talking to Deb earlier today on those. And the intent would be, it's a little, it's pretty aggressive, design it over the next six, seven months, and then have a town meeting warrant for construction in March. And then we should have some visibility from the Clean Water Drinking Water SRF. The short list or the intended use list comes out usually in July or August, so we'll know more to that $6.3 million when that list comes out, where things stand and possible construction, 2023, 2024, is the town website. I know, I think the town, we've been uploading information on the town website. That's all I got.
The estimate has gone up quite a bit, right?
It did. Well, we also included, there has been some, well, there's, it's, construction has been...
No, I get that. I don't mean to not take that into consideration, but yeah, that's...
Yeah, we wanted to be, want to go in? Well, we want to, we want to try to provide you with the best information that we can so you're going in with your eyes open, so...
What year was that neighborhood built? Was it in the late 60s, I think?
Yeah, that was about that vintage. There was a couple of different phases. It looked like late 60s, 70s in that timeframe.
That's what I remembered. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, and nothing's really been done in that neighborhood since. It's been pretty...
The pump station got enlarged, didn't it, at one point? At least the building did.
I think the pump station was with that...
Original.
Yeah. If not, it was...
Well, it got merged. It got merged to the lot that it's abutting.
What I can recall are the sidewalks we have right now there. Are there any or very few, right?
There appears to have been sidewalks that were constructed with the original construction. The roads are wide, but the curb reveal, so when you look at a site, we call the curb reveal, there isn't much curb reveal. So the paving and the sidewalk kind of merge in many places in the neighborhood. And what we observed is people mostly walk in the street. So that was, I guess we're calling, if there's some fine print up there, we said non-functional sidewalks. They're not apparent, but there's still some curb present.
Is there an understanding as to what kind of grant funding might be available for this?
Well, we've been talking with Deb with the storm water component. It was ranked number five on the last ARPA round, which was pretty high ranking. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things I think that this application has going for it, given its proximity in the Great Bag. You know, if we can help mitigate some of the storm water impacts from the nutrient removal, so if we can reduce some of the impervious area that has a benefit of pollutant loading, you know, the more and more we do this, the more we find out that storm water causes nutrients to go to the environment. So I think we're cautiously optimistic, you know? We'll find out, Russ, in July or August, I think, when the list comes out.
Okay. Thank you.
Selectmen Goman?
I don't have any comments. I'm not surprised at what you found.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I also don't have any questions, but I would remark, how much of the I and I, I mean, I know it's a really difficult location because of how low it is and the wetlands and all of that stuff. And do you think it would be worthwhile to have like a, like an education campaign or something? Because I imagine folks don't know, you know, just either don't know what they're doing because they've bought the house and that, you know, it's already connected or something. I wonder how much of that we could also help with an education component.
Yeah, that's certainly something we highly recommend. We probably, about five years ago, there was a sump pump program that came out of some of, I think part of that, that 2017 CSO Long-Term Control Plan update, there was a pretty large, I think it did townwide mailer with a pamphlet for that. So I know the town does have some of those.
There are some resources.
There are some resources with that program, but it's, it's never a bad thing to talk about because I do agree, like, people, I think about my kids or, you know, they don't know, like, they turn on the water and it goes down the drain and it disappears, right? So it's just not an awareness, and I don't mean to say my kids, but just people, you know, there's a, there's a level of, you know, we, things work and we take it for granted sometimes.
Yeah, I don't think it's totally age-related. It's human nature.
We did a campaign several years back, like Cole mentioned, when we were adopting the C-MOM program and doing some of that. And maybe it's time to educate people again about it because what was driving it was we have an ordinance that prohibits sump pumps from discharging into the sewer. And so we had to make decisions about how we were going to try to address it, either holistically, were we going to find people? You know, we had to just make some decisions. There was some suggestion back then that you could charge a fee to somebody to allow them to keep maintaining their current status quo, but it's, as Cole pointed out, it's a complex problem that touches a lot of homes in Exeter, not everyone, but a lot of people. And so you have to educate the broader populace about, and I want to give credit, too, to the Conservation Commission and their Think Blue program because that was very well put together and very well publicized for a number of years. I know Ginny Robb was very active in that. So it's just, it's come around again and it's time to go back out there and educate people about this.
Well, I'm not asking these questions to substitute another program or say, oh, we shouldn't do this because I think that regardless of the price, like, this has to happen. But I also, you know, I mean, can we combine some education and, you know, try to help?
Well, I think, I mean, Paul, do you think there'd be a more input component during design? So, I mean, I think there'll be, during design, there'll be more feedback, and we certainly can incorporate that education component and highlight that, and highlight that as part of that, part of that process, for sure.
Thank you.
No other question?
Well, thank you very much for the update. It's, again, much needed and overdue.
Yeah.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. You were there.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have DPW Director, Public Works Director Jennifer Perry to review the 2022 paving contract.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have before you Bell &amp; Flynn's proposal for paving for 2022. Jay Perkins and Paul Vlasic had worked together to develop our paving list this year. And I'm pleased to report that John Bell has been able to propose the same unit pricing for all of our paving materials, binder course, surface course, and smaller streets. But we would be using an index adjustment that is used by New Hampshire DOT. Bell &amp; Flynn has used this in the past. It's a fairly standard approach, especially with volatile pricing in both the asphalt market and the diesel market. And what we're proposing for work this year is paving, or excuse me, reclaiming Linden Street from the Little River Bridge to the Exeter River Bridge, and then overlay Colonial Way and Heritage Way. Those are both in Marshall Farms. And shim and overlay Drinkwater Road, the entire length, Epping Road from Main Street to Industrial Drive at the north end, the front row pizza and Stockbridge Funeral Home End, and Columbus Ave from Brentwood Road to Number 6. It's not exactly at Number 6, but there's a pavement break right now from a previous construction project, so it would go to that point. We also are looking at sidewalk projects. We had proposed a sidewalk project last year when the congressionally-directed spending was announced, and we had come up with a proposal for Linden Street, and that was not accepted. It didn't go any further, but that sidewalk, at that point, we were talking from Gil Street all the way out to, I can't remember the endpoint, but it was just before the Exeter River Bridge, really needs to be addressed. And so we are looking at that along with the Colonial Way, Colonial Way and Heritage Way. That would be an asphalt curb, like a Cape Cod berm, asphalt paved sidewalk, and the Linden Street would be a granite curb and asphalt paved sidewalk. We don't have Bell &amp; Flynn's proposals for you tonight. That will come back at another point in time, but we didn't want to delay at least getting the paving projects going, and that will help us in our planning for the season.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Director Perry? And Russ, is this a contract that comes to you to sign?
Yes, and I think the motion would be just to extend the contract with Bell &amp; Flynn and the particulars that have been outlined here.
I think that's incredible. They're maintaining the same pricing.
We're very fortunate to have such a long history with Bell &amp; Flynn. I think they know us, they know what to expect. And likewise, I think the town's been extremely fortunate to have that relationship.
Okay. If there are no questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to extend the road paving contract with Bell &amp; Flynn for the 2022 year at $71.90 per ton for binder course, $72.90 per ton for surface course, $73.90 per ton for urban compact surface course, and $74.90 per ton for smaller neighborhoods with dead ends.
Second?
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Most of you pass this, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Wilking?
Chief Wilking.
And Mr. Sharple. The public safety complex discussion regarding the fire substation.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll have the chief up here in a minute, but first, thanks for having me tonight. As you may remember, I was here in April, and we discussed a couple of things. We started the discussion on a fire substation, but the majority of the discussion focused on 3032 Court Street and its viability as a potential reuse as a police station. I heard loud and clear that that wasn't really a viable option. It wasn't one of staff or the consultants' recommended options, but it was discussed and we brought it forward. So now we're focusing on, I think, the 20 Court Street, the existing site, and the 6 Continental Drive. 6 Continental Drive, the town purchased in 2010 for public safety use. It seems the best, most viable location for a new police station. And 20 Court Street just isn't big enough. I mean, it's one acre to do, you know, could you shoehorn something in like a public safety complex and have both like they're over there now? But you couldn't provide a lot of the modern requirements for the PD and fire and the, you know, the apparatus bays and the storage and the secured parking and the secured access that modern police stations should have. So the next step in the process, we're at a point where we're having the consultant look at 6 Continental Drive as a new police station. But it's, but the substation, whether or not a substation goes there is kind of critical to what, how we look at 20 Court Street. So it's kind of a next, it's kind of a next step, you know, so I thought, you know, ask the town manager to come here, have a discussion, see if there's any preference. I mean, there is a workaround. If we have to, we'll kind of analyze both scenarios, but that is spending, you know, funds on the consultant, maybe down on the path we're not going to pursue. So I thought I'd ask to come here before you and ask. And the program, the fire program, as the fire chief will explain, is, what is it, 21,000 or so, just for rough numbers, you know, 21,000 feet, square feet is the programming. And that's what the fire department needs, you know, to operate their current facility and for the next, you know, for the, you know, 20, 30 years down the road to accommodate that. So that fire substation isn't an addition to that, it's part of that. So if there's a 6,000, say, a 6,000 square foot substation incorporated into 6 Continental, that will reduce the needs of 20 Court Street by that square footage. If there's not going to be a fire substation on 6 Continental, then the square footage over 20 Court Street. So what we do at 20 Court Street is really dependent on whether a fire substation goes out on 6 Continental and just staff and the chiefs weren't prepared to, you know, we didn't feel it's appropriate for us to make that decision, and we wanted to come forward and have a discussion with you folks. So with that, I will, we had a public forum at the last time, I think the select board, just one more thing. Select Board said, let's have the public forum. We did hold the public forum on May 4th. We did have about a dozen members from the public. We put it on our website. There was a press release that was printed in the Exeter newsletter, so we did, you know, pushed it out on emails and so forth. I think we did a good job of advertising it. We just, you know, it was a smaller crowd, and we did have some public comment, but none specifically on the fire substation. But the fire chief did do a presentation on kind of the need for the fire substation. And before you folks, the select board discusses it, I was going to have him up here and do that presentation.
Great, thank you.
Pass it off. Thanks.
And I do agree, Mr. Sharple, I mean, I was in attendance that evening, and it was very well advertised. It was, you know, a dozen people.
Well, thank you and good evening again. Fire Chief Eric Wilking. And I do recognize some of you were at that public hearing, that input session, and I'll just try to summarize and be brief. I know it's getting late, but what got us here? I think it goes without saying, but for the viewers on television and recording, the current facility was started, you know, construction in '78, completed in 1979. At that time, the fire department had three shifts, each consisting of four members or four firefighters, and EMS was in its infancy, but that was 12 people, and we had a chief officer. So that entire complex built for the fire department housed 13 people. Pretty much the same complement of equipment we have today, amazingly enough. There were four engines, there was a ladder truck, there was a rescue in there, a cheese buggy, a car, a forestry truck, you know, it's pretty much what we have today, except the big difference is the tools we have today are much larger than the tools that were built in 1970s and 1980s. So we're finding kind of a pinch for space. The fire chief back in that time, in 1980, now looking at the town report, commented that the fire department had done 762 calls to service, and that was a busy year for the fire department. Last year, we did 3,800 to 4,000 calls. We have four shifts now with a vote of the public of seven firefighters each, four staff officers, a health officer, and an office manager. As you know, we set aside the part-timer at this time, but we have 35 people working out of this facility. It was built and started with 13 people. There have been three studies conducted since 2001, and I arrived in town in 2005, shortly after the town had just taken a pretty resounding negative vote on a fire station. I won't even characterize it as a substation in 2004 after the first study that was compiled in 2001. Subsequent study was done in 2007, and as you know, the CPSM company came in and revised that, looked at all the data again, and come up with another set of recommendations that went final in 2020. So we've had three studies located, and in all three studies, they've indicated the need for some form of fire presence, call it a substation, call it a second station, whatever, in a portion of town that's underserved or not served adequately. The goal we're looking for, meeting a national standard, is a response time, travel time from the fire station to an incident of four minutes or less. That does not account for the time of callers on 911. That does not account for the time of firefighter takes to go from whatever they're doing to ready status and on the apparatus, just simply travel time. That benchmark is four minutes or less. CPSM analyzed our statistics from pretty much late 1918, late 2018 to 2019, and said that the data... that the data showed that we met the four-minute response time 1,600 times of about 1,800 calls, or about 85.5%. Not bad, not bad at all. Additionally, there were some service and fire calls at 558 to 672, about 83%. So the mix there, it's around 84% of the time, we were meeting that national standard at four minutes or less. They went on to look at a site that we directed them to, as Dave mentioned. We said the town owned the property at Continental Drive. What would happen if we had a substation on Continental Drive? And they took our call data from that same period and said that we would be able to meet 1,783 calls, or 95% of our calls from a two-station model, keeping Court Street in service and increasing services to that substation. And EMS calls would increase to just a little over 94%. So the amalgam there is about 95.5% from about 84%. Significant increase in the amount of the town, the taxpayers, the citizens, and the regions that are down, we can reach in four minutes or less with a substation. We tried to answer a number of questions that came up either prior to that public hearing, you know, input session, or at the hearing, and one of the things that came up was travel routes. How would we go about responding? And one of the things we looked at was logical travel routes around town. You can go on Google, just like we can go on Google, in normal traffic, following the speed limits, without any traffic congestion, and it says that we can reach Riverwoods, Balders, and The Ridge, you know, one of our primary customers, to the west. It's 2.6 miles, we can do it in six minutes from our current facility at Court Street. It's 3.1 miles, and it would take us eight minutes to respond there from the substation. So that property would not be a property that we would be responding to primarily from the substation. That would still be covered by the downtown Court Street Station through the front street, through that traffic circle. I love the circle, by the way, I'll go on record, I think it makes a ton of sense for all the right reasons. The Exeter High School, currently, it takes 11 minutes. It's 4.8 miles from the station, so all of our children, the teachers, 1,500 people at that facility. If something happens there, somebody gets hurt, has a medical emergency, can call for a bit of fire, 11 minutes for us to get there from our Court Street facility. It's only three miles and seven minutes on Continental Drive. Still outside that four-minute window, but far better than the 11 minutes. We just shot a piece of property east of us. So what would happen if we had a call at 100 Domain Drive? For those who don't remember, it's Tyco, Liberty Mutual, Bowers Gate, now all the reasons. That is three and a half miles, nine minutes from Court Street. It's six and a half miles and nine minutes from Continental Drive. The obvious reason is we get on the highway, and we travel from Exit 9 down Exit 12 and get back off. We travel that highway much safer, much quicker than congested area through downtown. So areas that we're going to do a, you know, response analysis of different areas, but I just wanted you to kind of get a perspective of what it was like, you know, why some of the positives of the substation. One of the things we discussed at the public input session was this. Whenever we leave the Court Street Station, and you heard the traffic study, the intersection study, we are traveling through a congested downtown area, through the Phillips Exeter Academy campus and their crosswalks. If we're going out Epping Road through that corridor, we have to pass the Main Street School, parent drop-off, parent pickups, very tight corner going around there. We often have to stop the railroad track. For those of you that don't know, the Down East to makes 11 trips a day, plus one trip unloaded to get to where it needs to be in the morning to travel, and typically three freights a day. That's 14 to 15 times a day that there's a train potentially on the track. We're delayed by the train often, and I haven't pulled the stats, but we will soon. Further, we all know the frustrations of the arms staying down for long periods of time with patrons of the M-track, the Down East to, embarking the train or disembarking the train until the train can start to move again. But all of that contributes to a greater delay than just what Google or MapQuest or any of these things say it should take us to get out there. All of those contribute to significant delays to get out to the Epping Road Corridor. Why is it more important than ever to discuss the validity and the timeliness of a fire substation? Just in the recent years, on the Epping Road Corridor, much of it's due to the TIF and other, you know, growth out there. We've seen 140 living units at Meeting Place Drive. We've seen 91 new living units at McKay Drive. There are 96 units at Willie Creek, Ray Farm, and there's more on the way. There are 52 new homes built on Woodridge, up off Watson, 12 new homes built on Rennie Lane, off of Beach Hill Road, and the proposed gateway to Exeter or some variation of that, that could have as many as 224 living units. So just in that neighborhood, where we're talking about, you know, covering from that substation, the 615 new living units in a very short amount of time have been constructed. In addition to the living units, we've seen over 400,000 square feet of industrial and commercial development there. Great Bay Kids, Primro School, Gourmet Gift Basket, Unitil, many smaller buildings over on Industrial Drive, many development and redevelopment along the Epping Road Corridor itself, all leading to significant value out there as well as a presence out there. Our population in 1980 was 11,000, give or take. We've gone up 50% in the time from the time the station was built to just over 16,000 now, and it was pointed out at the session, Exeter saw the largest growth in Rockingham County of all towns, both in raw numbers and percentage. We have seen significant increase in our population. One of the things I heard loud and clear was prior administration scared the daylights out of the town when proposing the substation in 2004, when they said, we need X amount of dollars to build the station, and we're going to need to hire 12 new firefighter EMTs to staff that building. That would have made me sit up and take notice as well, 12 new people. One thing to remember at that time is we had just transitioned from shifts of four to shifts of five, and to split five people, it would have been kind of counterproductive to build the new station. So they weren't wrong in proposing significant increases in staff. They had 12, it would have been shifts of eight at the time. Four to five downtown, three to four at a substation was going to be the mix, but that was necessary. So where have we come between 2004 and 2020 is we've already hired eight of those 12 people. The last two studies have both indicated that the right mix of staffing is going to be somewhere around eight per shift. We're at seven. We do not propose hiring any new firefighter EMTs for the new substation. Can I stand here in front of you, as I said to the people that were present at the session for the public hearing and whatnot, input, I can't take the no-new-tax pledge. I can't swear that I or a future chief is going to come to you and say, I need another person to shift, and this is why. But I will tell you that the eight firefighters we've hired since 2004, when the substation was defeated, were not hired to fill the building. They were not hired to fill a substation. They were hired because of the call volume and the workload that has gone from 760 calls to right around 4,000 necessitates hiring those personnel. So future hires will be based on need and calls, not necessarily where we're going to staff and how many we're going to staff people. So there's a big difference between where we are today and that need of a substation and where we were back in 2004 at the time. Lastly, just to wrap it up, and I'd love to take any future questions, my last comment I made there was, I believe the growth along the Epping Road Corridor in the northwest portion of Exeter during the past 10 years, as well as increasing, as well as our increasing ability to reach our residents in four minutes or less from 84% to 95%, demonstrates a clear need to consider a fire substation on Continental Drive. I do believe the idea of constructing the substation along the corridor is critical and well-documented in the past three studies over the last 20 years. And it would be a shame to go through the process of building that property, having the equipment there, having, putting the cost in to build an absolutely necessary police station without considering a small square foot presence of a fire substation out there to meet the growing needs of the town in that portion. If I can, I'd be more happy to answer any questions if I could, or...
Thank you, Chief.
I know we're getting late, but...
Important topic, though. Any questions for the chief?
It's a logistic question, might be premature. So say, the voters, we all decide to put the new police department out on Continental in a substation. That means we'd be remodeling or doing something for the main fire department downtown building. If it's not much about how you're going to function out of the main? I mean, is that, it's a concern of mine, that's why I'm asking you. Is it a concern of yours?
It is, and this is going to sound tongue-in-cheek, but we're doing it now.
Oh, good point, thank you.
You know, I mean, we have seven people shoehorned into four bunk rooms, which isn't optimal. We have nine people trying to eat lunch in a kitchen big enough for five to six. We're already making do with the space. If we delay anything, or if we decide that, for whatever reason, the substation, police station, take precedent, and we take a pause on what we do downtown, it's not much different than what we're doing today, but the substation provides immediate relief on both apparatus space, it gets things undercover, it allows us to shift some apparatus that's currently in that tight floor downtown, plus it shifts three of those firefighters. My goal would be to leave four downtown and put three on Continental Drive. I don't like two people alone out there. There's nothing they can do appreciably if they were a fire. Three, we can begin operations. So my goal would be to leave four and move three. Do the math, now we have four bunk rooms with four people. Now the critical need and the timing of that renovation is lessened, we can perhaps hit a pause, we can talk about what makes sense downtown if the substation is moving forward, if we see that ends in sight. It becomes very problematic if a decision is made not to move forward with a substation, and we're left to try to figure out what to do downtown and try to figure out what kind of money we want to put to downtown. That's a big, big decision, big problem.
Yeah, and that's where I was going. So part of me is leaning toward what I just said for scenario, but when I think about you being able to function properly while the construction is going on, it would almost make more sense to put the fire department, the main one, out there, and while you're still dealing, it's a logistical question, really, trying to find best practice here in my mind, so thank you.
I'm not, I have been privy to every meeting up along with LBA and Bob Breznik. I will tell you, I think he made a comment that we could move a public safety complex out there. It would use up every available square inch of that property.
It does make sense.
And it wouldn't be good for the police or us, it doesn't make sense.
But that's where I was struggling, so thank you.
Correct.
So that's a very good question, and I'm glad you asked that. Mr. Dean, when we were at the Public Works Awards Ceremony for Director Perry, you and I both spoke with the, somebody from Summersworth that was talking about their fire station that's currently under reconstruction or revision. I've actually driven by there many times, and it appears to me from just driving by that while the construction is going on, there's part of the station that's still fully functional. So I mean, I think that's doable.
Okay.
And that same scenario was done in London Dairy on their main school, across from their high school. But in both of those cases, they were able, they made a decision to build a new fire station to house, let's just say, their apparatus and operations, and move the apparatus once done into that, and then reconstruct or reconfigure the existing building. And that happened in London Dairy as well. They built a all-new apparatus bay, leaving the stuff inside, and then just shifted over, and it left them another whole build season to work on the second phase. Depending on what's done downtown, that may or may not be the, you know, the direction we're going. We're not talking about just chopping a piece off, building new, there's no property to allow us to build new, especially within the dollars we're talking, you know, that we really want to look at. But I don't want to hamstrung any project, you know, all the options are still on the table. But there are differences to what both Summersworth and London Dairy did compared to what we're talking about doing.
Sure. May I add something on that about the phasing and so forth? The current plan is to, if we were to, it's a benefit if we build a substation, because it would be the new PD and a fire substation at 6 Continental. Everything would stay business as usual as it does today at 20 Court. Then, when that building is completed, then you relocate the police, open up that space for the police, but also you can relocate some fire operations and apparatus bay, you know, equipment and personnel over there. So then you have a lot less people to kind of maneuver around, and the renovations at 20 Court Street will not be as major if you do a fire substation, because it's not like it's this and a substation, it's still only the program needs, the square footage program needs. So if you build that, it takes away the square footage needs here.
Yeah, and my question is for reassurance for the public, that if that's the route we go, that the service will still be provided as it is now.
Yeah, and it is the best. We thought about all different scenarios. This seems to be the best way as far as phasing and keeping the current public safety departments operating as, you know, as they do today.
Thank you.
And I think in addition to improving the call time in certain areas in town, to the chief's point, you know, this was built in 1978, 1979. Some of the, some of the engines and machines that we have, you know, put on the warrant the last couple of years are getting bigger.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think even now, chief, you've got some pieces of equipment that are challenging, even though they technically fit. It's a tight fit, correct?
They are. The biggest, the biggest piece of equipment, I know it was the largest investment that this town made, was the ladder truck we purchased in 2014. And DPW worked very well with us at the time. We had to raise the header of the door about a foot. Thankfully, there was space there, and it was, you know, the ability to re-engineer the door, but it wasn't widened at all because the space wasn't available to widen. That was a maintenance bay built 1979 to bring a truck in and change its oil, because we did our own work back then. So now we're backing a 42-foot-long ladder truck worth over $1 million today through a hole that has three clear inches on both sides of the mirror. And we've hit the door once, we're not proud of it. We're very fortunate as a town, the absolute vast majority of calls we respond to are to the downtown core and the Epping Road Corridor and the avenue, so we're always turning right out of the fire station until we don't. We turn left out of the fire station. The urge is, it's an open parking lot, the wheel gets turned, and when the wheel gets turned left, the rear of the truck goes right and rips $27,000 worth of damage on the rear of the truck and the door frame. So it will happen again at some point in time if we don't address the space. Now, I'm not a gloom and doom guy, we've dealt with COVID for two years, we see what we do, but I will tell you, that truck will hit the building again if we don't do something about moving the truck to an appropriate-sized bay at an Epping Road facility and responding back into downtown. That's an industrial section of town, that section deserves and would warrant a ladder truck response, just like a high-rise, a four-story taxpayer on Water Street would have that. So there's nothing wrong with putting a ladder truck in the new building out there, because we can have doors and bays big enough to house it adequately, and it allows us to make decisions downtown on what to do with that ladder bay. If we stay there, that's the bay the ladder stays in, and we are very careful with a spotter backing it in, and hope everybody remembers to go far enough out before they turn the wheel.
Yeah, so just one more follow-up on that, is that, I know we have to look at the whole picture, but it's really concerning to me all the time to get to the high school. The response time is just, we have been very fortunate, we haven't had any issues, but I don't want to keep pushing our luck on that. So I think it's an important aspect to keep reiterating as we talk about this, the response time. Epping Road, the railroad tracks, that's, it's very important, at least to me it is, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, there.
Selecting Ms. Gilman?
No, I've, makes perfect sense to me.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, and thank you, Mr. Sharples. Mr. Dean, there's no motion to be made or any action item in particular, other than the select board indicating a desire to pursue further investigation in the substation, is that correct?
That's right. That's the direction we're trying to get tonight.
That appears to be the consensus of the board, is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you both. And chief, in the interim, I will get back to you on the beeping sensor that I spoke to you about that's being used in Massachusetts with backing in the...
Sure, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sharples, I guess, is coming back to talk about the bike and pedestrian master plan.
Did you call that?
I did.
Thank you. Thought that, yeah, he was, all right, thank you. As you are aware, the town voted a warrant article that approved $25,000 in funding for a bike and pedestrian master plan for the town of Exeter. for a bike and pedestrian master plan for the town of Exeter. And it was in the 2018 master plan. It was...we got a lot of input and comments on bike, pedestrian, and Exeter, very engaged, very engaged residents here on that topic. So, pleased to, you know, see that the warrant article passed. So, I went out and I spoke with a few firms. I talked with Rockingham Planning Commission, and Tim Roaches is here tonight, and we worked on and developed a scope that I included in your packets. And I think it's a very inclusive scope. As you can see, I'll just, you know, I won't go over all of it, but it kind of looks at existing conditions, does an analysis of the existing sidewalk network, the existing bike, you know, where bike paths are, where, you know, share rows are, where bike lanes are located, and kind of takes an existing snapshot, includes community outreach, focus groups, stakeholder interviews, reaching out to users of the pedestrian bicycle network out there. You know, it's going to hold community events. Also includes ordinance and policy development to see, you know, what our ordinances could be to encourage those type of uses, you know, when things come, you know, when projects come forward, and, you know, full plan development, final publication. But the goal is really to look at all the improvements and connections that can be made and regulations that may be able to be amended that will focus on pedestrian and bike access, and kind of come up with a mini CIP for those projects, you know, for the next, you know, six years or so, like a mini CIP that can be folded into the CIP. So, really excited about the project. As you'll see in the scope, the Rockingham Planning Commission, the total of the project is $27,000, but the Rockingham Planning Commission is willing to bring 4,500 of their dollars to that, so the town of Exeter will be responsible for the scope, 22,500, which is $2,500 less than what the voters approved. However, I do ask in my motion and describe in my memo that I would respectfully ask for to authorize the town manager to expend up to the 25,000, because I really don't know, you know, do we need more community outreach? Do we need more, you know, when we get into things, is there a small amount of funding that we need to go up to that 2,500 delta? We would ask, not that we are going to contract, the contract's going to be original 22.5, but then it'll give us some flexibility if we need additional funding. That's why I'm here tonight. Also, Tim Roach, if you have any questions from the Rockingham Planning Commission.
Are there any questions for Mr. Sharples and Mr. Roach?
Just great to see this moving forward.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Rockingham Planning.
Nope. Okay. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a contract with the Rockingham Planning Commission and take any and all other action necessary to complete the bike and pedestrian master plan for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Roach, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes our discussion items, so we will move into regular business. And madam clerk, I see we have one solar exemption this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 85 Lot 71 in the amount of $19,500 for the tax year 2023.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving along to permits and approvals. We have Director Parks and Rec, Greg Beeson, here this evening. Good evening, Mr. Beeson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Greg Beeson, Exeter Parks and Recreation. I am here before you to first gain approval. As you know, your last motion on May 9th was to send the acceptance of the donation from TEAM on condition of the historical district commission. Julie and I were there, and two other members.
Yes, we did not have a quorum.
Yep. So, I am coming back now for your approval and also an additional expense on the concrete, because for the concrete pad, it required a concrete pump. So, there are two separate motions there.
At this point, because it was a governmental decision about governmental property, the HDC's approval doesn't...isn't necessary.
Okay.
We can go ahead and go forward without the recommendation or certificate of appropriateness.
Okay. Okay. And my recollection was, I think, everybody was in favor. We had made a conditional motion. So, Greg, there are two here.
Yeah, and there's one slight correction, Mr. Chair. So, the new motion for contrast concrete is $5,825. So, you'd already previously approved $4,325, and additionally for $1,500 for the pump.
Why don't we move...I'd entertain a motion to, first of all, accept the donation of a prefabricated gazebo from TEAM without conditional approval from the historic district commission?
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And then, I'd entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend an additional $1,500 in addition to the previously approved, conditionally approved, $5,825 from the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund for the Townhouse Common Gazebo Cement Paid Pad by Contract Concrete.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Next up, water fountain installation. Just as the common theme, finding contractors to do the work are very difficult. In the past, the water department had installed them. We understand that they are short-staffed. But we did get our irrigation company, who has previous experience in putting in water fountains at several facilities throughout Massachusetts. They came in at $12,000 to install all five of the water fountains, with one being brand-new. The Sustainability Committee requested one for the downtown, and we're going to put one in at Townhouse Common, so people will be able to fill up their water bottles walking by. So, unfortunately, I wish I had more. A lot of them don't really have experience putting in water fountains.
Any comments, questions? Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend $12,000 from the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund to complete the water fountain installation by Days Landscaping.
So moved.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
And last is the ADA gate expansion for the lower tennis courts. The ramp has been ordered, so that is coming in in a couple of weeks. We contracted all the fence companies. Brentwood Fence came out and looked at the project, but had not submitted any budget proposal. And then, AAA Fencing, who we've used numerous times in the past, came in at 1,700 and can get it done in July.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to allow the Parks and Recreation Department to expend $1,700 from the Parks Improvement Capital Reserve Fund to complete the ADA gate expansion on the lower tennis courts by AAA Fencing.
So moved. Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean, do you want to speak to the memo from Mr. Sharples on the Friends of Coastal Waters?
Yeah, so this is a new school that is being proposed for the Corporate Technology Park zoning district, and the town planner identified that this is as a governmental land use, that the select board has the ability to hold a public hearing on the proposed use. And as the memo states, it's the planning board and/or the select board has the right, but not the obligation, to hold a public hearing. The planning board received this letter and decided to hold the public hearing. That was done on May 26th, and the question is back to the board as to whether you'd like to have a separate public hearing outside the planning board.
Thoughts, suggestions? Selectwoman Belanger, as the select board rep to the planning board, your thoughts?
I can give you a little background. Take that off of my committee report.
Great.
So, as the town manager said, they're under no obligation, but they did...it was a really good conversation. There was some concern by the planning board members, some of them, about that intersection, because they're in the old FICO building. So, it's there, and they are looking...they're going to keep an eye out on the traffic to try not to add congestion to that intersection. So, their school starts at 8:00, 8:15. They did not discuss when it ends, but that is different than the middle school that starts at 7:30, so that will be helpful. There were a few residents from the area that were concerned about added traffic and noise, and a lot of repetitive about how we really can't...they're not under our use laws. Sorry, it's getting late now. It's hard to get words come out. But it was a really good conversation, so anybody that's interested can watch the planning board meeting on May 26th. It was at the end of the evening. It...that was about the extent of it. The biggest concern was that intersection on Hyde Street.
It's awful now.
It is awful now.
Especially during the school peak. I mean, I live right there. It's...
Yeah. So, it's...I think it's going to fall on us down the road. At some point, it was going to anyway. I've been concerned there for years, but yeah, that's just going to add to it. They don't have school buses. That was the other thing. I'm sorry. The drop-off, it's all parent drop-off and pickup. So, they're doing some at 8:00, some at 8:15. And they'll be doing that pickup at night, too, but again, there was no mention of what time school gets out.
How many students?
Up to three. I want to say 325, but don't quote me. That's the maximum. So, they just got approved a month ago, so they didn't really have any finality. You know, they're going to open and fall.
So, it's at least 200 cars, and that's the concern.
It's a lot of cars going in and out. And they're trying to encourage parents to carpool their kids.
Lots of law.
I know. I know, but we have no control. It was really just having a conversation and asking them to please consider the traffic, the addition to the traffic there.
And how many members of the public were there to speak?
There were two people from the ADA lane, I believe that was it.
I never even heard of this.
So, do I...
So, if we...a public hearing, Mr. Dean, within the next 30 days? So, that would bring us to the second meeting in June?
So, another option, Mr. Chair, as I was listening to the conversation, is maybe we weave what's been said here into the planning board comments that are going to go to the applicant. I assume that those are going to be drafted up, but I could be wrong.
Yes, it was a discussion...no, you aren't wrong. Mr. Cameron suggested that we at least do a formal letter, even though they're not held to that, but to put some writing. Thank you. Sorry. Words are not going to come at this point, but yes, non-binding.
But it's...that's up to you.
And the other question I had, though, is that the letter that the planning board got is in hand. So, the select board never got their own letter. Is that correct?
Right. That's right. We haven't seen one.
Right. So, the date goes by the planning board date and not the...my understanding was the select board was going to get it separate.
Well, that's a good question.
Yes.
We can ask.
That was my understanding, is that I believe...I don't have the RSA with me, but Mr. Sharples did give it to us for the planning board, and I believe it says the select board should get their own letter. So, that would might give us a little more time.
So, is it consensus that we'd like to have a public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
I agree. So, Mr. Dean, I think, number one, let's follow up on what Selectwoman Belanger said in terms of the select board requiring their own letter.
Right.
And then, that will dictate when we put this on the agenda.
Sounds good. We'll do that.
All right. Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. Dean, the town manager's report, please.
Just a few things. One is that we're continuing to work on the town offices building project. What that is, is an internal building of walls to build a couple of offices on the second floor. So, I know that I've talked about that before, but we're still in process with that. We've been meeting with the engineers and to make sure it's a secure area to do what we're anticipating trying to do. But we'll be bringing that to the board when it comes to better fruition. We're just about there, so we should have that at one of your June meetings. I also, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair, was able to attend Jennifer Perry's luncheon on May 18th in Quincy. It was very good to be able to attend that and participate in what is a fantastic award for her. So, enjoyed that. We've begun meeting with the Public Works Department on CIP review. We're already into that. It's almost that time again, so May 24th, we had a meeting there. House bills and Senate bills passing with local aid. I just want to point out a couple of them. SB 401, that will actually double our highway aid under apportionment A, it's called. We'll get the exact figures in a couple of months, but it looks like we're going to get a good bump from the state legislation on highway block grant aid. And also, that same bill included $1 million for body cameras, for police body cameras. So, we're trying to find out which bucket we're actually going to tap for that project, but we know we've got different funding sources out there to help fund it, so it will come to fruition. Then, HB 1221 also passed, and that's the state retirement contribution for us, for police and fire. So, that's a 7.5% contribution that the state will make up in the town budget, and that we have estimated at approximately $300,000.
And that is just for one year, is that correct?
That's right. That legislation was batted around, whether it was going to be multiple years or just a single year, and it turned out to be a single year. So, that is good financial news on the front. So, thank you to our state legislators that have been very supportive, the ones from Exeter have been very supportive on getting local aid to the municipalities. And the final thing I had is just that the audit continues with fieldwork, and we're working with Melanson on that, and our new finance director, Corey Stevens, is leading the charge on that and doing a great job.
Great.
So, that's everything I had for tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dean? Okay. Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
So, you were at the sidewalk with...
No, I went to the Swayze...
Yeah, the Swayze Parkway.
Yeah.
Yep. So, that was the only meeting that was on the agenda for me.
Thank you. Selectwoman Town?
Yeah, we had our water and sewer advisory committee meeting. We need to, at some point, think through what to do, because we are having trouble with a quorum, and we vote on abatements, and what are we going to do about that?
Okay.
And then, there was another thing, and it's just gone out of my head. Oh, the last bit of connection piece. We had the initial conversation with Paul Vlasic about another project similar to the neighborhood back here, which is...that road is out of my head as well. What is the name of that?
Neil Court?
No. The big neighborhood where we had all of the sewer lines connected to the houses, and we gave people an option.
Oh.
JD Hill.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're going this way.
It was actually JD Hill area.
JD Hill, right. The whole JD Hill area. So, we began the initial conversations to do that again in another part of town, which was...which will, at some point, need to come to the select board. And then, the other thing that we had a conversation about was we had a person from a large apartment complex come in and talk about the rate under which they are, the water and sewer rate. So, it's like the issue with the mobile home parks. You know, do they...can they collectively come in and have the same rate? Do they not have the same rate? Can they combine? Can they combine? You know, what, what does that look like? So we need to also begin that discussion to see if we want to change that.
So just a quick point on that, too. If, as, as we recall, the old water sewer rate system, we used to charge more for meters based upon size. So then when we went to, we went to a flat fee. So you paid the same rate regardless of your meter size. We adopted the tier system when that happened. So that was two thousand six. It goes back quite a ways now.
Yeah.
But we have option, option to the mobile home parks or condo complexes and that sort of thing. If they can, if they want to put in meters, they can. But we haven't gotten back from them that they think it's financially feasible or the way to go. It's easier to do status quo. So maybe that's changed over the years.
I think it's, I think that.
Good to revisit the conversation.
I think we should revisit the conversation because I think that nobody at the meeting was prepared to have a substantive discussion about what this would mean. There was nobody really there. I mean, Paul, Paul was there, but like there was nobody there from DPW to really talk in depth with what this would, what this would mean and what are the benefits and the, and I was not, well, I guess I was, I was not able to have that conversation based on the two thousand six history. So I think that we should, at some point, have a broader discussion about what that means for the town.
Thank you. Fair request. Mr. Dean, moving forward, if the, if the water and sewer advisory committee doesn't have a quorum, can they, can they still hear from the applicants and then come to the select board with a recommendation for us to vote rather than continue to delay applicants?
Yeah, I think they can sit with abatement applicants and make a, make a recommendation to the, to the board.
To this board.
I believe so. I believe it would have to come through you.
Okay.
Yeah, and we ultimately ended up having a quorum, but it was, it was because we chased people down, not because people.
If you don't have a quorum, you can't make a decision.
Can't make a decision. Right.
No, but you can make a recommendation, like you can hold a meeting.
No, but agreeing to make a recommendation is just about like making a motion.
It's, a lot of it is advertising, telling people, we need water sewer committee members. So.
Well, we tried that with some people who were very interested in critiquing us, and it didn't go over very well. But, but I agree. I agree. I mean, I think that, I think that the system has been working very well because I think it's fair to have, you know, we have a quarterly meeting where we can hear a bunch of abatement requests. There are not that many, but I don't want to, I don't want them to all come before the board and then have us investigate them.
One, one solution is that you could have, in the absence of being able to get a quorum of a committee, is you could have the Department of Public Works make those recommendations to the board.
Or instead, to your point, if it's not a recommendation, if, 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 let's say it's two or three people of the.
Here are the representatives.
They, they take, they interview the applicant and then come before the, this board, not with a recommendation, but with a summary. We don't have to hear the whole case.
Yeah, I mean, DPW used to do that.
That would work, wouldn't it take a vote?
Right.
Recommendation to me would take a vote, right? But a summary wouldn't. It'd just be a summary.
I'm just trying to think, you know, if, if you have months where you don't have, you know, quorum, I don't want to hold people's.
We'll try to keep thinking of ideas in the short term.
All right.
But DPW is an option. I mean, the water sewer department could make a recommendation to this board.
Well, and I think what was, I think what was happening was they were making a recommendation, and then we were overriding that recommendation. Because people would come before the select board and be like, that's not fair. Here's why. And then we would.
I, yeah, I tend to agree with you.
If Molly's on, the select board reps, Molly couldn't do that summary instead of.
Well, to Julie's point, I mean, if, if it's a committee making a recommendation without a quorum.
Not a recommendation, but a summary, just giving a summary.
Just a summary of what's there.
Summary.
So if they hear the case.
Yes.
I, I think you'd be okay with that.
Is that something you would be comfortable doing?
Fine, but I.
It's an alternative to Department of Public Works, that's all.
I, and I think, I think that that, in my view, that's what needs to happen. I mean, ideally, we would have another couple of members for the water and sewer advisory committee. So if anybody knows anybody.
Because that, that's not a committee that can be dissolved. I mean, that was.
No, was created by town meeting.
By town meeting.
Right.
We could dissolve it by town meeting, but that doesn't get rid of the problem of who's going to hear these abatements.
In the old days, the water sewer committee was actually a three-person committee.
Yeah, can we?
Composed by the select board. And then we went through a process of town meeting, reestablished the water sewer committee. There were some issues with what it was going to be in structure and form and authority. And so it got pushed to a town meeting to deal with that. And so I think to amend it, you would need to go back to town meeting and ask them to change it from its current, you know, seven, if you wanted to go five or, or even three to make, to make it workable. We would have to go through that process.
I mean, I think that would be a fair way to do it because I think we have probably two more meetings before the next town meeting. So like, that wouldn't be that big a lift. And I also think, based on the infrastructure with DPW addressing water, like there is not the issues that we're going to be talking about. It's more like, you know, it would be good to have a place to have an intermediate discussion of, you know, what's going to happen in terms of metering or abatement requests so that we're not going back to the system where we were overriding the decision of our DPW.
Right.
Because I don't want to do that either. So I think, in, you know, in the meantime, we have a meeting. We hopefully take a vote because we have a quorum. Or if we don't have a quorum, we have the hearing, we ask the questions, I come and summarize, and then we do, we grant the abatement. That feels fine.
Okay.
Yeah, it essentially becomes a work group at that point.
It's fine.
Of one or two people.
Actually, I would, I would advertise it that way. If, if you don't have a quorum, just try to advertise it as a work session.
I think a lot of times you don't know until you're actually there.
That's right. We don't.
Okay. Selectwoman Gilman.
I did not have any committee meetings. I'm sure Russ went through the bills, et cetera, that passed and are good for us. I just had a couple other ones that I wanted to update people on if they hadn't already heard. HB three oh seven, which was the bill to prohibit towns from regulating the use of guns on public property, vanished into thin air. Didn't make it out of the committee of conference, so there is no threat right there, right now. I'm trying to think of the other ones that would be good. The governor started signing everything. He's only vetoed a couple of things, one being the, interestingly, facial covering policy for schools. And he vetoed the bill which proposed schools, or public academies, et cetera, shall not adopt, enforce, or implement a policy that requires facial coverings from students and the general public. So he vetoed that. I think that's really the, the ten-year transportation plan was approved, which is great because it had some opposition because what they amended this year was to add a plan for electrical, electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging stations. And there was some resistance to it. I don't know, it's a ten-year plan. It doesn't mean we're going to do it next year. But it passed with the, with the amended, with the electric vehicle charging stations, et cetera, as part of the plan. And I think that really is the, is the highlight of the last day.
Thank you.
Okay, so bear with me.
Okay.
Because I've had a few. Julie, I'm just going to take this off for just a minute, just to take it down. Okay, so Conservation Commission meeting, May tenth. They talked about the Exeter Trail Race. It's going to be on Father's Day, June eighteenth. It's been happening for over ten years. Average of a hundred participants. It's going to start at the Northeast Lantin Company on Sixth Commerce Way. They didn't have a start date yet, and they were talking about making sure they have COVID precautions or protocols in place for that. Trail work, they repurposed some wood from decks that other people, volunteers knew. So they did a lot of trail work, bridging, and the only cost for it was, the amount of screws is a hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. That saved the town a lot of money or our Conservation Commission fund. PS and H came to talk to the Conservation Commission, and then they also went to the planning board. It was both planning board and Conservation Commission approved it, or Conservation Commission recommended to the planning board. The planning board approved it. The only thing is going to be that the trail, one of the trails is going to have to close down, but they're going to work with Kristin Murphy on the timing of that. The Elway Festival, I always say that wrong. They, anyway, the Elways showed up in time for the festival. That was a good thing. I sadly missed it because I got stuck out of town and came home at ten after one, after it ended. But from the videos and the photographs, it was a wonderfully successful event, and thank you Conservation Commission and all volunteers for that. Rain's farm works, the RFPs went out for the farm work, no bids came in. So Kristin Murphy is going to have to reach out to Elchit, the Elchit grant people, to find out what next steps could be taken so we don't lose that grant.
Right.
Just to make a recommendation, the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance does a lot of farm work, and they have a list of contractors that may not have been on the list that Kristin sent out.
I, you know what? I don't have my, I tried to keep my notes down, but I think she said seven or eight people, so I'll ask her alliance. I'll send her an email tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Planning board, May twelfth. There was a continued public hearing on the Phillips Exeter Academy from the multifamily site review off of Gilman Lane. The biggest concern was the fertilizer, so close to the riverbanks and trying to keep that down. But it was granted for one year. So that was approved. And if anybody drives by there, they're going to see that the work's already started, trees are down.
Decimated.
It'll look great when it's on.
I know.
Then there was a lot line adjustment from fourteen Riverbend Circle and one ten London Street that was approved. Letter from Friends of Coastal Waters, the committee voted, the planning board voted to invite them to the next meeting. And their election of officers remains the same. Langton Plumber Chair, Aaron Brown Vice President, Vice President, oh my gosh, Vice Chair. Pete Cameron is the clerk and still the rep to our Housing Advisory Committee. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Then, thank you, I attended for Molly because she had a conflict with parks, the water and sewer. I got to attend our Communications Advisory Committee.
Thank you so much, Nancy.
Thank you. That was eye-opening. So really, it was nice to fill in for you. I want, really, it was great. That was on May eighteenth. The website refresh, what an incredible project. I can't wait to see this. Though it did come to mind, and I did talk about this a little bit, but I have to bring that back here, that we kind of need to reevaluate or make sure we're all ready to go with our social media policy because there will be links to Facebook and things like that. From what I saw, there's going to be some links to social media. So I want to make sure that our, we're okay with, are they coming to the?
Yeah, Mr. Dean, can we, can we get a shot at that before it goes live? Because that's.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's news.
Yeah, we can do that.
Right, because they were talking about either kickoff from June first or July first.
Right. We, and we delayed the start of the new website to July first because they had a change in personnel. So I'll confirm that with Mr. Glouacki and then set it up that he comes and gives the board a presentation about the.
Because the social, I think we need to, we need to be briefed on the social media.
Yeah, I think that was, Nancy hit it right. I think there was a, wasn't a snag, but there was some issue about social media and how it's going to be handled by the new website. So good point.
Reevaluate the logo policy. So, and then there was going to be a best practices draft to you and the select board.
Yes.
And then there's going to be one to two designees on a list. So on who will be posting per department. So Bob Gluck, they all talked about how important it's going to be for training, though he felt he was a little limited on insisting on department heads' training or the designees. So he was going to talk to you about that. That there's a video to watch in the conversation. One of my suggestions, I was just by standing there, was to, at the very least, have somebody sign off that they're, they've watched the video if they're not going to trainings. It's, there's just culpability there that is a little concerning to me, that's all. And trying to make it quick. So each department will post their own material. The library has its own, but there will be a link available from the Newtown website to the library. Bob Glouacki had a meeting on Friday, May twentieth, just so you know that. Molly, for, with Mutico for some additional training. I can get rid of the tentative start date we just talked about. And the committee chair, Martha McIntyre, they, they wanted me to stress and acknowledge Bob Glouacki's work on this project and the tremendous job he's done, and wanted to make sure his efforts were acknowledged. And then I wanted to thank Molly, but I already did. I'm almost there. I'm sorry, guys, I had a lot of meetings these last two weeks. Housing Advisory Committee meeting met Friday, May twentieth. We did a recap of the regional conversation on housing. Everyone was very pleased with the turnout. We talked about next steps. We're going to continue to use the same approach. Have an event or, or a meeting, take that outcome, decide where we're going to go. So the next step is going to be Rockham and Planning Commission is going to have a listening session at some point in July, date to be determined. And that where they also talked about looking to unveil our storyboard map that's been sitting on a shelf as a COVID issue. Yeah, I was going to use the word, but it wasn't going to sound right, so I stopped myself. But anyway, and then another planning board meeting on May twenty-sixth. Minor subdivision was approved on Drinkwater Road. Then PS and H came to the planning board, so that I've already talked about. Coastal Waters, I already talked about the Coastal Waters Charter School. Okay, this one, I'm going to keep it brief, but I'm going to ask that we maybe put this on a future agenda. The new form of Baptist church on Friends Street was approved. Eleven units, no parking. So it's all public parking. So that adds to the eight units that the IOCA has been approved for. Okay, so there doesn't seem to be any clear data other than people saying, well, I go by and these spots aren't being used. We do have a great, finally, a list from Department of, our Public Works about all of our spaces and where they're located. I would like to try to be a little proactive. It's, to me and to other members of the planning board, it wasn't just me, there's some concern that we're having a cumulative problem here. I understand, we all understood on the planning board, we had to vote for that one particular project. But this is becoming cumulative, and, and we're going to have a problem. And I'm concerned about people who live downtown now, and it's a first come, first served. So maybe one of the things is issuing permits or something. I don't know, but I would like to have this conversation in the near future, if possible.
And snow removal.
Right. There's an issue. We've got to have, well, up to twenty-two and sixteen new additions to town, and we want to take care of our new residents when they come too. My concern is people vying for parking spots. I don't really want to see that happen if we can prevent that. So anyway, that's where I'm going with that. Okay. Sorry. Oh, okay. Okay. Senior barbecue is this Thursday at Swayze Parkway from four thirty to seven thirty. I'll be there serving. And finally, I'll be attending, Rockham and Planning Commission has a recent Regional Sustainability and Resiliency Program. So there's a webinar on Friday afternoon for that. And now I'm done. And thank you for indulging me.
Well, you know, thank you, and don't apologize because that's how we get our updates, and that's how we learn what the committees are working on.
I know, but it's so late, but I, there was nothing that wasn't important that I wanted to say.
I thought it was all important, and thank you for being very thorough. Thorough, active and thorough.
And I do want to stress, Molly, really, I'm glad I was the one that got to fill in for you because it was so enlightening. It's not televised, so other than going there, and I tend to be kind of busy, so I don't just pop into meetings randomly, so that was, that was, I'm thankful that I. filled in for you.
Oh, good. You were amazing for taking that on. I really appreciate. I know, I think that evening I had seven of it.
You had Water Sewer, I had Swayze. It was all the same night. It was all the same night.
Yeah, no, I wasn't complaining at all.
So just a couple follow-ups. Mr. Dean, before July 1st and the website, we need to, we need to talk at a Select Board meeting, and it may even be revising the social media policy if that's, that's the case.
Could be.
So I think that's important, and I hate to delay July 1st, but...
Yeah, and social media has all the, again, we talk about this as a town a lot at this level, and when you, when you get on social media and you start talking about town people, town people, but town board members posting, town staff posting, you know, all of these different issues come into play. And we have a social media policy that we've had since 2013. It probably needs some updating.
Yes.
And, and yeah, we can make that part of the conversation.
However, you know, as a former colleague used to say, it's a slippery slope once you start.
Yeah.
So we need to be very careful with that.
I totally, I totally understand that, and I think we've tried to, I don't want to say de-emphasize, because we, we do have a lot of Facebook presence out there, but we've tried to sort of...
Successful Facebook. I mean, the police do a great, DPW, I mean, Tricia does a great job with that.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so that, and then also, I agree with Selectwoman Belanger, we need to squeeze in parking at some point this summer to have a discussion on that. And then also, it's completely out of our purview, but I think there's an RSA. If we could get the town planner and the code enforcement officer to schedule a work session for the ZBA and Planning Board collectively, I think would be healthy sooner than later.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, and can I just add one more thing? So I don't know, because Dave didn't stay, and of course, it's late. The Planning Board did vote to recommend to the Select Board, do I have to wait for Dave to do this officially, about, about the parking study, how it had failed, and to bring that back?
Okay.
So I'll let Dave do that, too, officially, if that's the right process, because I don't want to jump a process, but that was a, quite a discussion.
To do the parking study?
To put it back on the warrant.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Because I had to keep apologizing to the applicants for hijacking their, their application, but I just felt it was so important to make sure that the cumulative part was being made aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
River Advisory canceled their meeting. Swayze Parkway, I already talked about that. I sat in for Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf correspondence. We had a letter from the president of the Exeter Sportsman's Club for filling their obligation under their lease to come before the board. Should we invite him? But he's requested two months' notice. Mr. Dean, when's the last time the president of the Sportsman's Club came before the board?
Wow, that's a great question.
It's going to be at least five years.
It's been, it's been a while.
You know what? We've got a busy summer. Let's give him three months' notice and have him come in September.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right. We copied on a letter from the United States EPA in response to a letter from the Director of the New Hampshire Advocacy regarding the Great Bay Total Nitrogen Permit. And finally, Xfinity notifying folks that they're going to increase the charge for the AMC Plus On Demand.
Wow.
So, last, unfortunately, we don't have anybody here, but I wanted to go over the board calendar. It's the 13th and the 27th. Both should be busy. We have a lot to bring back and to discuss. And I'll reach out to Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, but I would like, if possible, if the board could bring their vacation schedules, their summer schedules, to be fair to all of us and to Mr. Dean, if we could, if we could outline our schedule through the end of August or even past Labor Day on the 13th, as best we can, that would be great, just so we know where everybody is.
Yeah.
Vacation-wise.
Yeah, because I, I try to plan around meetings, but it's hard because you just said the 13th.
The June 13th and the 27th.
For some reason, because I'm doing, it's mine showing up that it would have been on the 6th, so.
What happened?
It was supposed to, but we had to move the May meeting to this, to this day, and the 20th of June is a holiday.
Of course.
So we worked around Memorial Day and Juneteenth, and also the fact that we weren't going to have a quorum on one of the Mondays in May.
Okay, so I do have it on the 20th already. Yeah, and my vacation, then, unless something happens, is I took it around the Select Board meetings for the 11th of July.
Of July, okay. Well, if we can, let's try our best to bring our schedules, and then we can go from there. And, you know, it just helps to plan the agenda if we know ahead of time if we have to vote on things, if one's going to be missing, or, you know, we don't want to vote without all five of us. So it is late. I have nothing else. Any other comments from the board, special items? I would entertain a motion then to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We're adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku.